Good morning, good morning, and I'll call to order the May 12th City Council meeting. Once again, we're doing things still a little differently. And before we get started, I'm going to ask the Clerk of Council to do a roll call so that you know that everybody's here. Madam Clerk?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Temp.
On the air.
Counselor Crabbe.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Present.
Counselor Garrett.
Present.
Counselor House.
Here.
Counselor House.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Thompson has had some issues getting in. I'm working with her now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Woodson? Counselor Woodson? Mr. Mayor, we currently have seven members present at this time.
Okay, good. We've got a quorum. We'll go ahead and get started. Before we get to our business portion of the meeting, we'll start. Counselor Thompson is not online at the moment, so I'm going to ask our Mayor Pro Tim, Gary Allens, if he would open us with a prayer. Is Counselor Allen on?
Mr. Mayor, I was not showing Mayor Pro Tim as being present as of yet.
All right, well, then I'll lead us in prayer, if you would. Now your heads. Father God, we come to you this morning asking for your grace and your mercy, and we thank you for all that you do for us, and we particularly pray for those that have lost loved ones during this pandemic. We ask that you be with all those families who are dealing with individuals who are exhibiting symptoms. We ask that you come into our midst this morning to guide us and keep us ever mindful that what we do for your people, we do for you. Now, we ask your blessings on these proceedings, and we thank you for all that you provide the citizens of this community. Amen.
Amen.
All right, and now, if you would, you have a flag. I do have a flag. I'm in the office, so if you would.
Valerie Thompson is now joining.
Will say pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republicans.
For which is safe.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, but they were to give justice for all.
Some things just sound a little different without a bunch of young folks out there saying that pledge, you know?
That's right.
First off, I would ask for approval of the minutes for the April 28th meeting.
I'll move for approval of the minutes. Walker here.
John Howell, second.
Moved by Counselor Garrett and seconded by Counselor House. Any edits or discussions? All those in order, say aye.
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 Is there any member of council who opposes? All right, they are approved. Couple of announcements I have on my agenda, but I'm going to ask for assistance in going through a couple of them. One is one of the...
Hey, hey.
We need to get those of you who are not speaking, if you could mute your phone and your screen, and that way, if you want to speak, we'll be able to see if you turn your mic on. But I did want to mention that we are going to be meeting in person at the Civic Center on the 26th. It'll be carefully distanced and spaced as we meet. We'll probably set up on the floor. Mr. City Manager, are you available to give any additional information?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Mayor, we are scheduled to meet the Fourth Tuesday, and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin is in the meeting, and she has orchestrated that, and I am going to yield to her to tell us how that is going to work.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good morning. Yes, on May the 26th, we are scheduled to have our council meeting there at the Civic Center. Everything will be on the arena floor. We will have council set up, as you would see it right now, socially distanced apart. Each of the council will have their individual microphones, and nothing will change in terms of how it's conducted. We will have on the floor also space for citizens to come and be a part of that. Again, we will have socially distanced, the chairs will be set apart. We will also have a microphone in the center as we would do as a public meeting, so that those who wish to speak or those who are on public agenda will be able to come up and to speak. So, yes, it's plenty of room on the floor, and everything will be set up for June the 26th, for May the 26th, and of course, the June 9th meeting as well.
Well, Deputy City Manager, you've had your hands full in trying to orchestrate some of these unusual ways to try to get us all together, and I appreciate all that you've done.
Absolutely.
But it will be good to get us all in the same room, even if it is from a distance.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Counselor Thomas?
We have a budget meeting scheduled for 2:00 that afternoon. Is that going to be at the Civic Center also?
I think it probably should be. If, I mean, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We will have the budget meeting immediately, excuse me, prior to the 5:30 meeting. I was about to say immediately following, but I don't think we want to be there afterwards. But Madam Budget Chair, unless you say otherwise, we will plan to hold that at the Civic Center just prior to the regular meeting.
No, that's fine, as long as someone will get to the council and let us know exactly what we need to do, just to start that at 2:00.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am. All right, I did want to give you a kind of a brief little update on COVID-19 as it impacts our community. Our numbers, I sound like a broken record, but they continue to go up a little bit. We're at 300, as of this morning, we were at 377 positive cases. We did unfortunately add two more to our total of people that have passed away. We have 14 individuals that have lost their lives to the virus who live in Muskogee County. Our hospitalization rate continues to stay flat. In fact, it's actually, the number of folks in our area hospitals has actually decreased over the last few days. So, we continue to watch the trends, and we continue to try to make sure that even though more testing is available and it is generating a little bit higher numbers on our positive tests, we are continuing to manage, our hospital folks are continuing to manage their resources exceptionally well. So, that's the number we're watching, and we're continuing to watch that. You know, the governor's got a press conference coming up, and we are anxious to hear what happens to his executive order, whether or not it stays, or it expires, or maybe he submits another order in its place. But whatever route he goes, we'll be prepared to react. We are beginning to open some other facilities. The city offices, administrative offices, are scheduled to be open on the 18th, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin to speak on that in a moment, and you'll hear about some of the other facilities that are slowly being opened. And we're doing it incrementally, and we're doing it by watching the numbers, because it's really a blend. I mean, it's not all science, and it's not all just by feel and trying to get the economy open. Our goal is to try to get our quality of life back to where it was and get our economy back to where it was. But we know that really, there's no perfect time. There's not going to be a green light that flashes when all of a sudden everything is clear and we're able to open everything and get right back to normal. There's still going to be urgings from our office, just like from the CDC and DPH, to continue to socially distance. If there are activities that are taking place and we cannot provide enough space for them to keep some distance from one another, then we're not going to open those facilities just yet. We've got some of our Parks and Recreation fields that, it's just not time yet for those leagues and organized events to gear back up. There are contact sports, basketball and soccer are contact sports. So, it's just, for us, I think we need to really watch the trends on the numbers, and as we continue to gain a little bit more confidence as the numbers stay flat from a hospitalization perspective, we will look at opening more. But I'm going to ask the City Manager and Deputy City Manager to kind of give you some more detail as to which functions of the government will be open and how that will take place.
Mr. Mayor, let me just, and I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Goodwin to speak to the operations, as she is Deputy City Manager of day-to-day operations, but wanted to say that, as you've said, we are going to reopen the public buildings on Monday, May 18th, and I do want the mayor to know and the council to know that we are doing what we need to do to make sure that we protect our employees and protect citizens. And we're going to be sending out today, in fact, a COVID-19 mask-wearing policy that will require the employees to wear masks when face-to-face with other employees and/or when face-to-face with citizens and conducting business. We want to make sure that our employees remain safe, and we want to make sure that the citizens remain safe as they reengage the government and public buildings and doing business with the city. So, that COVID-19 mask-wearing policy will be signed today, and we are going to strongly, strongly encourage citizens coming into the public buildings to wear masks. But we will have a policy for our employees regarding wearing masks. And so, with that, we had a video that we had planned to show you today, and as technology goes, we had a corrupt file, and we can't run that video this morning, so I've asked Deputy City Manager Goodwin to quickly get those department heads who are on the video to give a brief update to you in specific work areas. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. And Mayor, as you have directed us, we will open our facilities back up on Monday, May the 18th. That, of course, includes all of our buildings, the Government Center, the City Services Center, the Annex, and all other government buildings. We are doing so with social distancing in mind in an effort that we are able to minimize the spread of COVID-19. As people enter many of our buildings, they will see the six-foot social distancing markers on the floors. They will see Plexiglas that shields at the counters. More cleaning, more sanitizing taking place than ever before. We are also encouraging...
Valerie Thompson is now exiting.
We are also encouraging those that are entering public buildings to wear a face mask for their protection and for the protection of others. You will also see employees wearing face masks when engaging with the public as they continue to live our new normal. I will be followed by various departments that will be speaking and talking about getting things back open. Public Works, I will have Kyle McGee and Charney Ware. Parks and Recreation, Becky Glisten, Trade Center, Haley Tillery. Bull Creek and Oxbo, Jim Arton. Nancy Bourne with Election and Registration. And Lula Huff, Tax Commissioner, will be followed, and they're going to share their strategies on getting things back open. I also serve as the interim Director of the Civic Center, and the Civic Center will be open along with the ice rink again on May the 18th, but only the administrative offices of those facilities. So, that means that our box office will be open, and so, all of those events that were canceled, if you had purchased a ticket for any of those events, you will be able to come to the box office to receive funds regarding those events that were canceled as a result of COVID-19. At this time, we do not have a date specific that we will open either facility to large events or large gatherings. This information, of course, will be shared as we get closer to the end of the June 12th State of Emergency Declaration, at which time our mayor will provide direction on how we move forward. We are, however, preparing for the return of great entertainment and family fun at the Columbus Civic Center and at the ice rink, and so, we do look forward to that return and safe return for everyone. At this time, I will ask Charney Ware or Kyle McGee with Public Works to follow me, to come and discuss the events of Public Works, the recycling and other efforts that we have planned.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Goodwin, and good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. As part of Public Works' solid waste and recycling collection, I'm very pleased to announce that we are currently caught up with yard waste and household garbage collection items. Our staff has worked tirelessly through this pandemic, and they've stuck with us and sacrificed, and we are glad that we're caught up. So, now, it's next steps. Everybody wants to know when is recycling going to be reinstated, and my answer is, as soon as we can possibly do it. Our goal right now is to reinstate recycling June the 1st with very strict, taking measures to get our staff and inmates separated as much as possible, decked out with all the PPE they need, and we will try to do this June the 1st. And we may have to slow the line down a little bit to accommodate the amount of material that we can sort, but I think that's the sacrifice that we're willing to make, and the question is, why haven't you slowed the line down? Well, the answer is, under normal circumstances, we have more material than we can process. We've got to keep that line going as fast as we can. So, we didn't want to do that for extended period of time. So, if we start June the 1st and we have to slow it down, no, some items may end up in the landfill that we cannot process, but at least we can start back processing recyclables. So, that's where we are. Our goal is June the 1st. We're trying to make that happen, and before June the 1st, we're, in the next couple of weeks, we are going to try to implement drop-off sites. We have five drop-off sites throughout Muskogee County, and we would like to implement them as a source-separated collection only. For instance, if you have a stockpile of cardboard that is separated, it's not commingled, you will be able to take that to that drop-off site. If you have aluminum, you know, we would have a bin for that. The issue right now is we are not separating recyclables on our sorting line, because we can't maintain that social distance in between workers. So, we plan on June the 1st to spread those workers out, put barriers in between them, slow the line down if possible, and we get some material sorted through that line, because I know Columbus is ready to get back to recycling, as are we.
Okay, and so, what that means is citizens will be able to begin putting their recyclers back out on the curb for pickup. So, I know Kyle has said we're going to try and to make it happen. We're going to make it happen, June the 1st, so be prepared to place your recyclables on the curb, and we will begin the recycling efforts again.
Lisa?
Yes.
This is Charmaine Crabbe. I have a question for Kyle. Do you have the locations that you were speaking of, the drop-off locations?
I don't have them.
And they'll be open?
They should be on our website, Counselor Crabbe. I can get those for you guys. I know one of them's at Cooper Creek, one of them's at Smith Road or Williams Road exit, but let me get a list of those. They should be on our website. They would be our normal drop-off sites. One is at Sasserdote Lane, one is at Victory Drive at the old recycle center. So, let me get that.
The Welcome Center off Williams, Williams Road.
And in front of the recycling center itself on the road.
That's number five.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Kyle or Pat? Thank you both. Next, we will hear from Becky Glisten with Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, councilors and mayor. I'll try to be as brief as possible with our large list. Our offices, our administrative offices, will open Monday with a staggered staff, some still teleworking from home due to the closeness of the office, but we will be available for the citizens starting Monday. Our senior centers will not be able to be opened before the June 12th date due to the governor's must-stay order. Our recreation centers fall in that same category. They will not be able to be open at least until the June 12th date. We are planning a soft opening, if you will, for Lake Oliver Marina starting Monday. Citizens will be able to get gas, bait and tackle, they'll be able to launch their boats, they'll be able to get concession items. The only thing that we will not be offering at this time will be our launch service, which, as everybody knows, is pretty popular, and we have large crowds for that. So, we will put that off until at least the June 12th date, so there's no mingling or closeness within the building itself. Due to the nature of boxing, our Haygood Boxing Gym will remain closed until at least June 12th. We also are planning a soft opening for Cooper Creek Tennis Center starting Monday. We will ensure social distancing, no double play. We're going to try to skip every other court. We have plans for checking in at the clubhouse where the players don't have to come into the clubhouse. Tennis balls will be marked with names for safety reasons. We have different plans in place for that, that the players will be told upon coming to the center. Britt David Pottery Studio will not be able to be open until at least the June 12th date. Jonathan Hatcher Skateboard Park will not be able to be open until at least the June 12th date due to the volume of users there. All of our athletic fields, as the mayor mentioned, little league, adult leagues, will be closed until at least the June 12th date. Woodreform Soccer Complex, as soccer is a contact sport, this facility will stay closed until at least the June 12th date. Our disc golf courses are currently open now, and they will stay that way. Our parks are open for the citizens to enjoy the trails, walking, jogging, running, bicycling. However, our playgrounds and pavilions will stay closed until at least the June 12th date. Our restrooms will remain open. The Ma Rainey House, we will open it up Monday morning to start tours. We'll have to take less than five people in each tour, and we just ask the citizens to hopefully call ahead and schedule this, so we can be prepared for those. The Columbus Aquatic Center and our outdoor pools will, our Columbus Aquatic Center will remain closed through June 12th. We will further evaluate at that time with the Department of Public Health. Our outdoor pools, we would like to say that we would wait till June 12th to make that decision, however, we pretty much think that those might have to stay closed for the entire summer. And our summer camps right now, we have no word on those until we get closer to the June 12th date to see if we will be able to offer summer camp. Our therapeutic recreation division at Pop Austin Rec Center, due to this population, this program will continue to be closed until at least the June 12th date. And that's it for me.
Becky, thank you. Are there any questions of Becky?
Becky, you might want to mention that one of the primary reasons that the pools are looking likely to be closed this summer is due to employment issues.
Yes, sir. We typically employ high school and freshly new college students for our outdoor pools, and at this particular time, we have not received a lot of feedback that we will be able to retain any employees. Parents mostly are scared for these children of this age to come back to work. We feel like that due to that, it's going to be impossible to staff the two outdoor pools. We are still trying at this moment, but due to that and some Health Department regulations and different things, the outdoor pools may have to stay closed this season.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask Jim Arton with Bull Creek and Oxbo Golf Courses to provide his update.
Yes, the golf courses have been open. It's been very popular with the citizens of Columbus. There's been a lot of demand, and what we have done is we've followed the city guidelines as well as PGA recommended guidelines to operate safely. So, we've done that with a lot of signage. Anybody that hasn't opened, I would urge you to have more signage than you think you need, because it's, you know, it requires a lot of informing. But, of course, we're distancing, we're telling them that we're distancing the people that are coming. We have markings on the floor in the clubhouse, and we're using wooden stakes for spacing outside the door, because we're only allowing three people in the clubhouse at a time. So, when we're busy, we do have people lining up outside. And, you know, we're doing six feet plus, we actually have a large area in the clubhouse, larger than six feet. Additional signage in the clubhouse as well, reminding them that there's only three people. And we have Plexiglas at both point-of-sale systems at the counter to separate the first from the clerks. We have one entry and one exit only, so we keep the doors open to keep air flowing, which is a recommendation, and that way, people are not passing each other. They're one way in, one way out. We're constantly sanitizing everything, whether it's the counter, the doors, the bathrooms. There's one bathroom open, but we're constantly wiping down and spraying, and of course, the golf carts have touch points, so we have one rider per golf cart, and we are, we're constantly sanitizing them to make sure that anything that would be likely touched has been properly sanitized before it goes out to the golfers. As far as the play on the course goes, we're telling people they're not allowed to touch the flag sticks, and we also have foam in the bottom of the cup, so that the ball doesn't go so far down that they would have to touch the flag stick to get the ball out. So, that's been received very well. We've taken the rakes off of the golf course, so that there's no touch point there. We're just asking them just to smooth the sand with their feet. That's all been received very well. Our food and beverage area, our grill, we've closed that operation. However, we have been able to provide on-course service, and when we do that, you know, the servers are wearing masks and they have hand sanitizer available, both for the employee and for the customers. And then, another thing that we have done is we have, we've really made a push for online reservations, so that people don't have to necessarily do it here in the clubhouse. They're able to book their reservations online and just, you know, reducing the interaction and the need to touch. So, those are the things that we've put into practice here at the golf courses, and it's working quite well. We've been very busy.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. This is Mimi. Or Lisa? I have a question.
Okay.
When, thank you very much for that report. Appreciate it. When they're serving food, are they taking the food outside, or are they in that area where it's kind of like a dining area? Are they being six feet apart there? How are they doing the food?
Jim?
Yes. So, the only food that is being served would be prepackaged food, so we're not preparing any food. Our restaurant is closed, so it's prepackaged food. preparing any food. Our restaurant is closed. So it's prepackaged food. It would be, you know, a bag of chips or crackers, something like that. It's just, um, or we, we, we may make some, uh, sandwiches, but it's all, uh, prepared and served outside. So they're eating it as they're going around the golf course. There's, there's no, uh, dining area.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. And I apologize. I took a senior moment with your name. Sorry. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. Jim, thank you so much for that report. Next I'll call on, uh, uh, Hailey Tillery with the Trade Center to give her update. Hailey?
Hello, everyone, and good morning. Um, the Trade Center has been taking a lot of precautionary measures in preparation for opening Monday. Um, the biggest thing on Monday is to realize our building will be open, but we still will not have events taking place that week. Um, all throughout the month of May for all of our clients, we've reached out to them and even future clients, we have virtual meeting options where we're giving them virtual tours. We're walking them through the building. We actually with our social, um, tables diagram software, we can virtually plan a client's entire diagram, um, from computer to computer. So we've communicated that to the clients and have been working very, uh, well with that. In fact, clients have really enjoyed this measure so far. Um, as far as our front desk, we're already in an enclosed glass type box, um, if you're familiar with the admin, um, office. So for our front desk receptionist, we're only going to have one person, one customer in that room at any time. And there will be signage that will list that as well as sitting area outside of the front area where people can socially distance if there ends up being a line. But honestly, all of our appointments right now have been set up virtually and this will just be if we had a walk-in client that came in who had not prior organized anything. Um, the entire building has been sanitized from top to bottom over the past couple of months. And we develop a new opening and closing sanitation checklist that takes place every single day. Um, this will also take place when events start reopening. In addition to that, um, one thing I want to briefly talk about, the Trade Center has adopted a three-phase reopening process. And this has been communicated, um, with our clients. We have all of our clients, um, required to do event insurance as well as signing an addendum to their contract that also shows them what their responsibilities are as a client. Um, this is a group and team effort when clients are having events. So they are aware of what measures that they need to take and what they need to communicate to their attendees when coming to their events. For instance, all tables in the future will always be seven feet apart from one another. The standard in the past was five, but we're going to have tables at seven. Um, during this three-phase reopening process, when June 1st comes around, the Trade Center will be in phase two at that time if everything is going as planned from phase one. This will mean it will be four weeks of declining cases percentage wise. And this will also be still recommendations on what the mayor and what the state orders are as far as when it comes to vulnerable individuals that we talked about. Um, we can, it's still going to be aboard any socializing in groups more than 50 that cannot socially distance. So the events that we have lined up in June, we have come up with a certain plan for each event on how those events can still take place while social distancing. Now, if the client has decided they don't want to follow those protocol and they want to wait to where the, some of the guidelines are lessened throughout the months going forward, they have that option. We do have our first event on June 6th and that event has been completely modified to social distancing guidelines. Um, with things dealing with food, we've been working with our, um, partner and vendor special ovations. There will be no buffet stations. Everything will be plated. There will be nothing preset on the tables. Um, that's just, I'm giving you the big scope, um, or the little scope from a big scope that we've been working on just to give you an idea. Um, in addition to that, all of our employees know the, um, they are going to be required when they're on the floor to be wearing their mask. We will have sanitizer stations all throughout the facility now. Um, before you leave a bathroom, there will be a hand sanitizer right by the door. Um, before you enter any type of event space, there will be a hand sanitizer station. When you come into the building, all the main entrance, there will be a hand sanitizer station. We also will have different indication signage on all of our doors that will remind people, if you've been sick, if you have been around somebody that has been sick, we ask that you do not come in the building. Um, one thing that we're working on right now, um, I have found that people respond well and they remember acronyms. So one thing we're going to have is Comeback Smart Columbus for your events. Smart is the acronym where S stands for shield, your cough and sneezes. M is mask your face in public. A is apart, meaning remember to social distance. R is rinse, can constantly wash and sanitize, and T, tidy, keep your areas clean. Um, so wherever you're at, there's an image that matched each acronym. That image logo will be where it needed to be. For instance, in the bathroom, you might see that social distance logo in the bathrooms to indicate if you walk in and there's a line, we have 16 other bathrooms you can go to. So there's going to be signage everywhere. Um, I know it's, June 6th is going to really be an opportunity for us to test this method and it's a small event. So I feel comfortable with that. Um, but each, each week that we go by will get us closer to phase three. Phase three begins on July 1st. And again, that's if, if everything's been going as planned in phase one and phase two. Phase three will still be strict modifications, but it will almost be what the new norm's going to be mo- moving forward. We know that this, this whole pandemic is going to be new habits that are not going to go away. So that's going to be the guidelines for events moving forward as well. The addendum has really helped with our clients understanding what their responsibilities are. In addition to everything else, um, I feel like this is going to be a great plan to get us back on track, to get us acting as normal as possible, but also with the number one priority to remain safe and healthy. Um, if you're interested in knowing what this three-phase plan looks like, you can always go to columbustradecenter.com and in the about section, we will have everything mapped out on there, including a document that you can download for each phase. Um, again, not to take up too much of your time, but that, that is the small breakdown over a big scope of research and planning that we feel is going to be a safe environment for our citizens that will be walking in our building.
Hailey, thank you so much for that report. Great report.
Um, yes, um, Hailey, you were speaking about the insurance. Can you elaborate a little bit more? Because you said the customer. So just want to get a better understanding on that portion.
No, absolutely. So currently in all of our lease agreements, we require a liability insurance for the client. This is a standard protocol. I'm going to be honest with you, for most of our clients with one-day events, it has not been as mandated as it should be. So with this moving forward, we're just going to be making sure that every client has a copy of liability insurance that they're given us. The addendum also expressed the importance of their insurance to have a pandemic clause in there. Um, we've worked with several insurance, um, agencies throughout Columbus so we could give the client the opportunity, if they wanted to call one of those clients, to take off some of that burden and pressure and to keep the cost low. So they could call one of those clients that we, that know what we're requiring to kind of loosen that burden. There's also ways they can acquire this online. But to give you an example, a gathering of 100 to 150 people, event insurance is close to a hundred dollars more. So that's the expense that a client is paying for them to be safe as well as for our employees and the way we perform our jobs to be safe.
So in other words, if I was to have a wedding and it was, um, 150 people, uh, you'll give me a list of different insurance companies and I will call them to get an insurance policy for the event.
You would. Now, realize though, that would be your choice to call one of those insurers. You can still call whoever you want and set up your own insurance. These are just people that already know what we're looking for as a courtesy to help you not have to explain things as much. But you could still choose anybody as long as we have that certified copy of liability insurance as well as you signing our addendum. Our addendum just breaks down whatever phase your event is in, whether it's phase one, two, or three, and what those requirements are during that phase for you and your attendees to follow.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? Um, you said that the outline of the faces are in the, on your website. Could you also add an example like we just talked about, like for a wedding or something like that? Um, like I think the Kiwanis have their event, you know, there, you know, once a month. Give a, a one or two examples of what it would look like, you know, your contract for, with adding the insurance so that people can get a, an idea more or less because hearing that, it puts a little fright in someone that's listening would say, hmm, do I want to really rent there? Now I got to go buy insurance to do this event. Maybe I need to go somewhere else. But I think if there's something that explains it and an example on your website will ease up people that even, even are not watching this now, but hear about it. Cause you know, perception becomes a reality.
Absolutely.
It gives them a chance to go and see what we had just discussed.
Absolutely. And what you just mentioned is something we thought about. We, we've been doing that more one-on-one with our current clients. But yes, for our future clients, not to be deterred away from having an event here, um, we can definitely use that language that we've been using. It's, all it is, is not to provide fright, but add peace of mind and reassurance that you're going to be in a safe environment.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And again, like I said, it's a suggestion because I'm pretty sure as people listen, people talk and it gets turned all around and then people might say, well, I don't want to go have my event there. But if they can go online and look on their own free will, then it'll make it a lot easier.
Absolutely. No, thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions of Hailey? Hearing none. Hailey, thank you so much for that great report. We appreciate that. Okay, next we will hear from Nancy Boran, uh, election and registrations office.
Good morning, mayor, council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
Yes.
We will be open for early voting beginning Monday, May the 18th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We'll be open that Monday through Friday. We've pretty, pretty much kept our same hours that we do normally for early voting. The only thing we've eliminated is the Sunday and Monday, the Sunday before Memorial Day and then the Monday of Memorial Day. But we will be open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the weekends from nine to four, just as we always have. We will also be practicing the social distancing. We will require voters to practice social distancing. Our workers will have protective, um, shields in front of them to their sneeze guards. They'll also have masks and gloves available. Equipment will be sanitized after every person votes. And we've already issued over 15,000 absentee ballots. We're issuing about a thousand a day. So we anticipate having a really great, um, turnout or, or number of people who vote in this election. Um, our workers here have, uh, masks. We have sanitizing solution that we have purchased from Swamp Box Distillery and we are using that as well as gloves and all other social distancing issues. We are expanded beyond our bounds. Um, we've had to borrow space to accommodate equipment and paperwork and, and ballots. And so we are continuing to look for additional space and ways to manage the equipment that we have.
Okay, Nancy, thank you. Are there any questions of Nancy? Okay, Nancy, hearing none. Thank you so much for that great report. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, next we will hear from our tax commissioner, Lula Huff. Ms. Huff? Okay, she may not be on the line. Okay, that ends the report of all of the departments and, um, uh, how easing into the opening of our May 18th date. So if there are no further questions, that ends the report.
Uh, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, this is Councilor Huff.
Hello, how are you, Councilor Huff?
I just wanted us to extend congratulatory remarks to Director Boran. He had a daughter to graduate recently. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor Huff.
Okay.
All right. Deputy City Manager, thank you. I mean, it's, you know, the, the crazy thing is that I think the council would all agree. Um, there's no roadmap for this. There's never been a situation that we've had to deal with quite like the one we're navigating and, and like all cities are, uh, around the globe, really. Um, but I, I, I just want to tell you that, that I really feel like our folks under your leadership have done just a fantastic job of looking at every opportunity to try to get our governmental properties back in action as soon as it's safely and practically possible. Uh, we, it's fluid. We keep watching it. Uh, as, as you heard, I know I've received a lot of calls from, uh, parents of, of little leaguers, uh, and we want them to get on the field. We really do. But we want them to do so safely and we want them to do so in a, in a manner that is safe for the grandparents to come watch and not make it a, you know, not make it a situation where they, uh, they feel awkward in an environment that may, uh, harm their health. So thank you so much for that. We will get that, uh, video up, correct?
Yes, we are. Yeah, we'll be working on that. Had a little glitch here and there, but we're working to pull all of that together so that we can post it on social media and other sites so that we can, it's a continuous flow of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and to that end, we're actually going to host a, a, a live town hall, a virtual town hall meeting, uh, Thursday of this week at, uh, 5:30. And we'll be taking questions from the public. We've already been begun collecting them, uh, and, uh, and we'll try to make sure that we get the information out that, that our citizens are interested in hearing. And also along the lines of the, of this being such an unusual and unique, um, situation and how, how much uncertainty is around. I remember when, uh, the, the first address I, I gave as, as mayor was a little over a year ago and I, I indicated I was going to ask council to support a one cent sales tax. And, uh, and, and council did. Uh, well, just, you've seen how we are struggling. Madam Budget Chair, Judy Thomas is, is, uh, is, is, is working very, very diligently on trying to craft this budget that we've, we've dropped in the lap of council. Uh, and it's, 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 it's difficult because there is so much uncertainty. Uh, and, uh, if governments don't know where and where their revenues are going to fall. And a lot of families don't either. There's a lot of families that are, are doing, doing fine, but they still are uncertain about what the future holds with regards to the, the overall economy. And then there are other families that are really hurt. They've either lost jobs or they, they, they operate small businesses that are hanging on by, by a thread. Uh, so because of that, uh, and I have spoken with most, if not all of the councilors and I, and I believe they support this, uh, we are going to, I'm asking council to approve a resolution to postpone our request for a splotched. Uh, with all the uncertainty in 2020, we just don't need to add one more, one more burden, uh, to our, to our, uh, our, our, our community. Uh, so we are, but, but this is not an abandonment. This is just a delay. Uh, we expect our economy to get back on track very, very quickly. In fact, I'm not normally overly optimistic about, about finances. I tend to be a little more conservative. Uh, but I really think that Columbus, because all the momentum we had going into this situation, we're going to see it come out very quickly. But it is going to take a little time. So, so there is a resolution, uh, on the, uh, on the agenda today that is going to ask council to support delaying the splotched vote until November of 2021. So I just wanted to mention that, that as well. All right. With that, uh, we'll move to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I-
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. City Manager, you had something you wanted pulled up, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll turn it over to you. We, I'd, I'd like to pull up, uh, um, the city attorney's, uh, appointment of, uh, of a new community reinvestment direct.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I believe that, um, my candidate, Mr. Robert Rob Scott, uh, is, um, going to join this meeting, uh, as I, um, present to you for confirmation, uh, Mr. Robert, um, Scott, uh, as my candidate. But mayor and council, I am pleased to, uh, bring forward Mr. Robert Rob Scott as my choice to fill the position Director of Community Reinvestment and Real Estate. Uh, Mr. Scott, uh, has joined us, uh, this morning, uh, at least I hope he's there, uh, via Microsoft Teams. Uh, if confirmed, uh, Mr. Scott will be the first confirmation using this format. Uh, Mr. Scott is being recommended based on a proven record- Mr. Scott is being recommended based on a proven record of performance. Uh, he comes with more than seven years of experience in housing and urban development grant management. Uh, he has a rich history of developing communities, creating affordable housing opportunities, and working to eradicate homelessness. Uh, since 2015, uh, he has served as a senior programs specialist for Gwinnett County's Community Development Office. Uh, during this time, he has successfully managed more than 83 home investment partnership projects by utilizing more than $13.7 million to acquire and rehabilitate homes to low-income and first-time home buyers in pursuit of the homeownership dream. Rob is well-versed in the affordable housing arena. In addition to being well-versed in the affordable housing arena, uh, Rob has tremendous experience building systems to address community homelessness through homelessness prevention, emergency shelter, and rapid rehousing. Under Rob's leadership, Gwinnett County saw significant increases in client exits to permanent housing destinations, as well as decreases in homelessness recidivism. Rob's, uh, knowledge, background, and experience in community development block grant and home programs will provide for a good transition for the city of Columbus. He comes highly recommended by my selection committee composed of Deputy City Managers Pam Hodge and Lisa Goodwin, uh, Finance Director Angelica Alexander, and our Human Resources Director, Rita Hollowell. I believe Rob will be a good fit for the Columbus community. Um, he was born and raised in Hartford, Connecticut. Uh, he's a graduate of Clayton State University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in organizational leadership. Uh, he has been married to his wife, Tanya Scott, for 14 years. Now, Rob and Tanya have three children and grandchildren, and a grandchild. Uh, so Mayor and Council, I am confident that Rob will provide the continuity, stability, progress, and improvement, uh, we need in our community reinvestment and real estate department. Uh, I am proud to present for confirmation for the position Director of Community Reinvestment and Real Estate, Mr. Robert Rob Scott. Uh, and he'll start at an annual salary of $89,804.28. And we expect him to start, if confirmed, around the first of June. And so Mayor and Council, I ask for your confirmation.
Councilor Huff would move for approval?
Uh, Councilor, you have a second.
Councilor Woodson, second.
All right, there's, there was a motion. It was a motion by Councilor Huff, and then I heard Councilor House with the second. Uh, any discussion on the motion to confirm? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any council members opposed? Mr. Scott, congratulations. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, uh, Mr. Scott, I don't know if you can, if you're on video or just on the phone, but, um, you're, we welcome you. And, uh, do you have a statement or something you want to say at this time?
Absolutely. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome, awesome. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, City Council Members and, uh, City Manager Hughley. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to say that I'm honored to receive this confirmation. Um, I'm looking forward to working with, um, City Manager Hughley and his team and Ms. Hodge. I wanted to take this time also to, um, inform you that I intend to work to understand the needs of your respective communities. Uh, and I'm going to work very hard to implement solutions that provide positive visibility with significant outcomes, um, that continue to make the city a great place to live, work, play, and do business. Once again, thank you so much for, um, um, your appointment, and I'm going to work to, to make you all proud.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, I want to welcome him with a hand clap of welcome, if will.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
These are unusual times. Normally, we would take an opportunity to shake your hand and welcome you and slap you on the back. We'll save that up though, when, when all this passes and we'll go through that. We're excited to have you on board. Uh, it's an area that we are really heavily focused on, uh, in trying to improve our community. We look forward to working with you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Any comments from any councilors? All right, Mr. Scott.
It's, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to go back for the record to state that all 10 members of council are present.
Okay, good. Thank you. So it is unanimous. Mr. Huff?
Councilor Huff here. Uh, let me put my camera on so he'll have some idea who I am. Good morning. Congratulations to you. We look forward to working with you. Uh, and I've, I've been through that county quite a few times, and you all have done a great job up there. I hope to bring some of the wisdom and the excitement in Columbus, Georgia. Uh, congratulations again to you and your family, and we welcome them. And we will, uh, welcome you with open arms, and we look forward to meeting you in person very soon.
Thank you so much for that. I'm excited, and I promise you, I'm going to bring everything that I've learned, uh, throughout my, the course of my work history here to, to help continue to, uh, build the community. Thank you so much again for your kind words.
Thank you.
All right.
Rob? I just want to say I'm welcome to Columbus and just want to give you a heads up. I'll be calling you at all hours and sending you texts from this road when I'm on the street. Uh, John can testify from that. Your phone will get pictures and a little message and at your earliest convenience. So welcome, but just wanted to give you a heads up. Your phone will be busy by me.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Woodson. It's so funny. I already wrote your name down on my paper.
Oh, so they told your mommy, huh?
Nope, just my keen perception. That's it.
Well, keep that in mind because I have a project already for you.
All right, we'll sit down and talk. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. Scott, welcome. We look forward to, uh, we look forward to good things.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Uh, City Attorney? It's your agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. Again, congratulations, Mr. Scott. Uh, Mayor, we've got a few formal resolutions on the business agenda for council to consider today. The first one up is, uh, related to municipal court. The Chief Justice of the Georgia Supreme Court, Harold Melton, has extended the judicial statewide emergency through June 12th. This resolution would allow municipal court to use the Columbus Civic Center and the Trade Center after that date, from June 13th until September 15th, as needed to try to ease the flow of people coming into the government center. This is a request of Municipal Court Judge Stephen Smith, and it is ready for adoption.
Councilor Garrett, for approval?
Say it.
Cliff, do I have a question?
Yeah.
Is there, I see that they're talking about m- municipal court, but what about magistrate court?
Um, that'll be, either, um, they'll handle that through the same personnel or magistrate court, which has a lower flow than normally of people. They may still operate out of the government center. That'll be up to Judge Smith. But he will, uh, you know, let the public know how that's going to work.
And that's all going to start around June, June 13th?
Correct.
Okay.
Did we get a vote on that, Ms. Clark?
Mayor, you're muted.
No, we did not. No, we did not.
All right, Mayor, we need a vote?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just held one and was surprised nobody answered until I saw I was still muted. Um, all right, any other questions? It's been mo- motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Worked better that time. Any, any councilor opposed? All right, it's approved.
Okay, that passes. Next item, Mayor, you have already mentioned, but this is the-
Motion to approve to delay the SPOLOST till November 2021.
Second. Councilor Garrett, I'll second.
Second, Mimi.
All right, there's a motion by Councilor.
This would delay the special election until November 2nd, 2021.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, when I have talked with people in the community about, um, delaying this SPOLOST vo- vote, the first question I get is, so what are we going to do about the government center in the meantime? Would you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking. We are actually going to move ahead with the government center plan, and that's one of the reasons this was a delay as opposed to an abandonment. Uh, we, we understand and we take very seriously, as all of you do, that, uh, that we made a commitment to the citizens to try to give them a safe environment to come conduct government business. Uh, this gives us some time to, to more thoroughly vet, uh, some of the options that are out there. And, uh, we're going to continue to move forward though. We intend to have everything we can get done, done prior to, uh, to the vote coming around, uh, next November. So there won't be any, won't be any grass growing under our feet. We're going to continue to work towards a, a solution.
And if there, um, are, um, issues with the government-
Hey, I need some help from the-
As we've seen the past, it, we'll just have to take care of those as we have, um-
That's why we're continuing to move, and we really don't think we're going to lose a lot of time because all of the things that we're going to do during this, um, short delay, we would have been working on anyway. And that is making sure that council feels comfortable with, with the, the, the option that we choose, make sure they feel comfortable with the location, whether it's in its present location or we choose another one. So all of that would be going anywhere, uh, going in, in process anyway. So we would have had to deal with those, knock on wood, if they happen. And, uh, and, and, and we will, we'll continue to do so as we move towards a, a, a SPOLOST vote in 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Budget Chair.
All right. Did we get a vote on that, Ms. Clark?
No, sir.
We did not call the, okay. All those, there's no, any other, uh, discussion? Or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any councilor opposed to that? Okay, that passes unanimously.
All right. The last item we've got listed, Mayor, would ask the Georgia local, our local legislative delegation to the Georgia General Assembly to amend the Open Meetings Act to allow local government entities, such as the Columbus Council, to hold meetings via teleconference or other digital means on the same basis as state agencies.
Second, Mimi.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any councilor opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right, that has passed. Mayor, that's all we had listed formally. I want to give another shout out. Congratulations to Chief and Nancy Boran's Bulldog graduate. Congratulations.
Uh, absolutely. We all share their excitement. Uh, they just got a pay raise, I guess, when they have a child graduating, right? All right, well, good. Um, any, any questions for the city attorney before we move on? All right, next up is the public agenda. And our first, uh, uh, our first individual is Ms. Teresa Elamine. Ms. Elamine, are you, uh, on? Jer- Jeremy, you trying to get her connected?
I just admitted her, so we might need to shout out one more time.
All right, uh, the, the, Ms. Elamine, are you, are you, uh, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Oh, well, great. Well, listen, you, you have the, I guess, the honor or the, or maybe it's not the honor being the first individual to appear before council, uh, virtually. And what we'll do is, we'll do it just like we do in the, in a meeting. If you will, uh, state your name and your address, and then as soon as you begin your remarks, I've got a timer here that I'll begin, and then we'll let you know when your five minutes are up.
Oh, okay, cause I, I, I was trying to set up my own timer here so I could be sure. Cause I don't see a timer. Normally, at the council meeting, there's a timer that you can see. But you don't appear to have that here.
Would you like me to give you a one-minute notice?
Uh, well, let me try to add my timer.
All right, good deal. I'll let you get started. All right, again, your name and address, and then I'll hit the start on the button.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa, uh, Teresa Elamine, uh, with the Southern Anti-Racism Network, and the address is 3911 Steen Mill Road. And I, I do want to start out, Mr. Mayor, uh, by congratulating Mr. Scott. And I look forward to meeting with him so we can talk about the deep poverty, uh, that we have in Columbus and how his role may be able to contribute to that. And, uh, Mr. Scott, you're joining, uh, the wonderful staff of Columbus Consolidated Government at a time when we have quite a few battles, uh, going on in the community. Not the least of which is trying to stay safe from the COVID-19. And Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, uh, for the excellent job you're doing in keeping us informed under COVID-19. Uh, I, I went in that very long line on Saturday at the Shirley B Winston Park. It was hundreds of people in our cars. And so I was tested on Saturday. So I'm waiting for the results. So I'm quarantined until then. Uh, but, um, I do want to say to Mr. Scott, uh, that I do apologize for, uh, what needs to be said today. Uh, Columbus prides itself on being the first, uh, consolidated government in the state of Georgia in 1971. Well, that was right about the time that I was engaged in the civil rights movement, and we were saying black power. That meant black political power, Mr. Mayor. And consolidated governments are known to dilute black political power. That's why Atlanta will never do it because they're going to county commission, and they want a city government, and they'd be majority black in both places. In Durham, North Carolina, where I came from, same thing. It's Durham County, and it's the city of Durham. But during that period, when all the black people around the South were fighting for their voting rights and going forward on the voting rights, Columbus, Georgia founded during slavery in 1828 or something like that. Columbus, Georgia decided it would consolidate. And that legacy of consolidation and the legacy of slavery has brought us to the point where we are now. My subject is the Liberty District, and specifically the Liberty Theater. I have called for reparations, Mr. Scott, uh, from the city of Columbus, this consolidated government, which maintains a number of Confederate monuments that are maintained by the city. This is something that is a, a legal question for the black majority here in Columbus, Mr. Mayor. And I want to revisit that meeting from April 28th. That was a scandal. Mr. Mayor, when you first said that you were going to let Isaiah Hughley go, you may recall I sent you an email saying, what did you mean by that? Because I thought it was, you were abdicating your role as mayor. And I know what I've been watching for nine years from Mr. Isaiah Hughley, City Manager. When he presented that proposal from Mr. Smirey on April 28th, he should have known that he did not have the votes. Everybody in Columbus knows it takes six votes to win anything. And you have a white majority on the city council, Ms. Crabbe, Mr. House, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Allen, Mr. Davis, Ms. Thomas, and you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that when you consolidate governments and you draw the lines to maintain a white majority, even though this is a black majority town, I think the citizens have to understand the politics of this fight at the Liberty Theater. So when Mr. Hughley put it out there that Mr. Smirey told him to do what, then Ms. Woodson fought harder for the Liberty District than anybody. She's Puerto Rican, and I told her yesterday how much I appreciate what she did, because Mr. Huff has got to pony up, 'cause he says he has some kinda plan. Well, Mr. Huff was supposed to get into the Liberty Theater and do that. I've sent you, uh, 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 I hope that Mr. Scott will be given the document that I.
Ms. Elamine, I'm sorry, your five minutes have passed. Yeah, you can put her back, put her sound back on, Jeremy. Ms. Elamine, yes, ma'am, I started it right after you gave your name and your address. You get five minutes to appear before council. Now, if you want to, uh, we, we, normally during meetings, we'll allow people to come back at the end of the meeting for three additional minutes. So if you want, you can, I think you can use that same login and go back through the same route. You'll be placed in the lobby again, and at the end of the meeting, you can finish up the three additional minutes. But I'm afraid I've gotta cut you off now. You, you know, I've, I've, I, I, he's got you muted, and I cannot hear you. I, I can't, I can't hear you, Ms. Elamine. If you will sign back in at the end of, 'cause you've used your five minutes. I was very careful about timing it after you did your announcement, uh, you, and we'll get you back in. Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, the next individual to appear is, uh, Ms. Susan Gallagher. Uh, Ms., Ms. Gallagher, are you, are you on? Jeremy, is Ms. Gallagher on yet?
Yes, she is. You're, you're muted, Susan. There we go.
All right, Ms. Gallagher. You might wanna unmute your board there.
Am I unmuted?
You are now. You are now.
Okay, great.
And I tell you, Ms. Gallagher, just a moment.
Wait, 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 would it be possible to bring Ms. Winston on at the same time? My CEO is here also.
That's fine. And, and what I'll, what I'll tell you is the same thing I, I tell the other folks. You've got five minutes, and I'm gonna start a timer after you introduce yourselves and give your address, and then when that five minutes is up, I'll, I'll let you know. If you want me to give you a one-minute warning, I'll be glad to. Uh, otherwise, at five minutes, I'll just have to cut you off.
Okay.
All right, so you can bring her on. Both of you give your names and your address, and then I'll start the five-minute timer.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. I'm Andrea Bill Winston, CEO of New Horizons Behavioral Health, twenty-one hundred Comer Avenue, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-zero-six.
Good morning.
Good morning. Susan.
And Susan Gallagher, New Horizons Behavioral Health, twenty-one hundred Comer Avenue, three-one-nine-zero-six.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for having us. Susan and I just wanted to take just a few minutes to share an opportunity that, uh, not to share an opportunity, but just to share with you some things that we're seeing in the community. We wanted to bring to your attention that we're seeing or what we're labeling as the next public health crisis in our area, and we're seeing a notable increase in people that are suffering from behavioral health issues. And Susan is our Director of Marketing and Development, and she's gonna share with you some of the details of what we're seeing. Susan?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good morning, Mr. Mayor and city council, and thank you so much for the strong leadership the city has had since the beginning of this COVID epidemic. I think that, uh, our flattening of the curve is a testament to the, uh, leadership that we've had. And then to hear Ms. Godwin speak about all the openings that the city has planned and the way you're doing it, uh, just a, a really great testament to the leadership we have here in Columbus. Uh, I wanted to talk to you this morning about the COVID pandemic, the emotional, financial, and socially devastating consequences to the country and our community and the looming public mental health crisis. Although the COVID pandemic, uh, touches some lives in our community, we've lost some individuals, which is tragic. We have some individuals that have, uh, tested positive, close to four hundred individuals, but almost everyone in the community are, close to two hundred thousand people in Muskogee County are feeling the anxiety and stress of, um, of the COVID virus. Um, in Muskogee County, at the beginning of the year, we had approximately thirty-nine thousand people living with mental illness. This equates to one in five or twenty percent of the population, while currently only point one eight percent are testing positive for COVID. So already you can see that mental health is a, an issue that we need to address. Although the exact number of people is unknown, there are many more suffering from anxiety and depression as a result of the fear, social distancing, isolation, and widespread uncertainty due to the COVID epidemic. Uh, wanted to share with you that, uh, anxiety is already the, uh, leading cause of, um, of mental health, uh, diagnosis in the United States, with about forty million people prior to COVID pandemic suffering from anxiety. Depression, approximately nine percent of the adult population suffered from depression prior to the COVID pandemic. In Georgia, suicide is the number-two leading cause of death for children ages two to seventeen in Georgia prior to the pandemic, and it's in the top ten leading causes of death for adults prior to the COVID, uh, pandemic. I believe we're going to see increases in anxiety, depression, and suicide due to the isolation, depression, fear, anxiety of, uh, living with the COVID pandemic. Now, anxiety is a normal response to a stressful situation, and depression, sadness is a normal response, but we have to know the signs and symptoms of when we should seek help. If you're, um, not sleeping well, uh, for more than two weeks, if you are, uh, having, uh, your diet changes, uh, you can't eat, you're eating too much, uh, you, uh, become irritable, uh, irritable, anxious, um, you can't feel pleasure anymore, a loss of interest, feelings of helplessness and hopelessness, these are all signs and symptoms of depression and anxiety, and we need to know when to reach out to somebody for help. Uh, it's always a good idea to reach out to your, um, primary care physician first. If you don't have a primary care physician, New Horizons is here, uh, to help out. We're also seeing people self-medicate with alcohol and drugs, not just illegal drugs, but maybe overusing prescription drugs to help take the edge off of anxiety and depression. And we have to know that these are unhealthy coping mechanisms, and how can we, um, cope with anxiety and depression in a positive way? We see droves of people being tested on the news for COVID with widespread community outreach events, public service announcements, but the real public health emergency, the mental health, the anxiety, the depression, the tendency to use, uh, substances, remains hidden. At New Horizons Behavioral Health, we have experienced this dramatic request for our services due to people experiencing anxiety and depression because of the virus. Uh, New Horizons serves as your public safety net for, uh, core behavioral health services to children, teens, adults, and families, and wanna encourage people to visit our website, www.nhvh.org. We have a list of free online resources, apps to help manage, uh, stress and anxiety. We have information on how to access the crisis line and the DBHGD emotional support line, and, uh, we're always here to, to help in any, any emergency.
Ms. Gallagher, you have, you have an amazing job, and I, and I'm gonna ask you guys something. I, this is way too important, an issue, to try to cram into five minutes. So, why don't, why don't you and I get together offline, and, uh, we'll set up a time for an update on the mayor's agenda and give you about ten or fifteen minutes to walk through this, 'cause this is, I think this is a pretty significant, uh, ancillary issue that goes hand in hand with the, uh, self-isolation, with the, the, you know, uncertainty of what's happening from an economic and a medical standpoint. So, so thank you for what you do. I, I know Councilor Barnes invited.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you because, uh, um, you know, all of us, all of us citizens are experiencing to a certain degree of anxiety, subliminal stress and anxiety. And, uh, um, Ms. Winston reached out to me, uh, because we both had a concern. And so I wanna thank you for allowing them to, to come on, because the, the worst thing that can happen, you have a lot of period, period, people who are experiencing these symptoms and don't know how to interpret it until it gets to a point where it's very morbid. And so having them come on and explain the symptoms is, is really a God save it. And having this medial, Mr. Mayor, and the, the fact that you reached out to me, um, to have them come in is just awesome, and so I do appreciate the follow-up, because this is really too important, an issue, to just give a cursory look at. And so I appreciate you inviting, um, Ms. Winston and, uh, Ms. Gallagher so that they can go more in-depth and maybe do something on CCGTV to alert. The biggest feeling thing is what Susan mentioned. A lot of people are experiencing what's called "I know me." They are feeling, with no feelings, and that's, that's something that they can't interpret, and they need a professional advisor to help them through. So, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna delay the time. I appreciate. And Andrea and Susan, thank you so much for what you're doing in the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll be, uh, Susan, I'll get in touch with you, and then we can get you back on for a little bit, little bit broader, broader discussion of the topic.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jeremy, thank you. All right, uh, we had one other, Mr. Robert Westfall, but I think he has canceled his appearance. Is that not correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I've got a few items, uh, remaining on my agenda. I appreciate you move, allowed me to move up to confirmation of Mr. Robert Rob Scott. But the second item on my agenda is amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan of the fiscal year twenty seventeen through fiscal year twenty twenty-one, five-year consolidation plan. Uh, the CARES Act, uh, is alive, and, um, uh, it has made available to us nine-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-nine dollars in supplemental community development block grant funding for grants to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. Um, HUD has provided for the immediate availability of a five-day public comment period for amendments and new plan submissions associated with, uh, our plan, our five-year plan. To fully utilize this regulatory waiver, uh, an amendment of the current Citizen Participation Plan is needed. And so that's why we're coming before you today, asking you to, uh, approve, um, for filing of amendments to our plan.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
That's my head. Counselor Huff? All right, motion by Counselor Woodson, second by Counselor Huff. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The manager.
Any counsel opposed? They pass it.
And Mayor, that's, again, that's the CARES Act. That's nine-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-nine dollars that we did not expect, but for the coronavirus, we would not have received it. Uh, the next item on my agenda, number three, uh, variance for Hampton Inn Hotel Canopy Encroachment. Um, approval is requested for the construction of a canopy over the right-of-way at twelve oh one Broadway that will encroach approximately fourteen feet, ten inches onto the city's right-of-way along Twelfth Street for a distance of thirty feet, six inches. Uh, engineering, uh, received a request from Family Holdings, um, uh, the owner of the project to construct a canopy for a drop entrance to the hotel. Uh, and the city has authorized this type of permanent encroachment, uh, in the past uh, due to, um, the wide width of the right-of-way in the Uptown area. Uh, the owner understands that should the encroachment ever become in conflict with any public improvements, the encroachment shall be removed at no cost to the city. The construction of the hotel improvements and future parking deck will eliminate approximately twelve existing parking spaces. Other than that, there are no, uh, financial obligations for the city, and we're bringing this before you today for your consideration.
No approval?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Wood.
I wanted to request a delay on this, um, as the city, um, repres- council member representative. It was brought to my attention that the Uptown did not even was familiar with it. There's, um, concerns in reference to using twelve parking spaces. While some may feel that that's not, um, a lot of spaces, others do. Um, I have, um, a little, uh, another request from the developer. If I can please get an overlay of the, um, of the drawing, because the sketches that was received, the site plan that was received, had too much information on it to get a good, good visual of which, um, parking spaces will be removed and where. Um, I have no problem. Let me make that absolutely clear. Um, I have no objections with, uh, owning. I think it's great. I think it'll, it'll enhance. And I don't have any problems with that. My concern is with the twelve parking spots. Um, I know we have parking decks downtown, and I know we have other things, but the perception is a reality for my constituents in District Seven and throughout the city in reference to parking downtown. So, um, I'm only asking for my colleagues to please allow me, um, two weeks, which is the next council meeting, so I can meet with the developer. I can meet with Uptown, um, CSU, and whoever it's going to impact, so they can get a better understanding of it. Again, I'm not saying anything against the, um, petition. I think it's beautiful. I've been to many hotels. I've been throughout the world. I know what they're talking about and asking. But I ask respectfully for this delay until all parties can get a better understanding, and I can get the overlay to be able to understand about the parking spaces.
Uh, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, I know that, uh, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do want you and the members of council to know that the owner and owner representative are available, uh, available uh, on this, uh, Microsoft Teams, uh, with us if there are questions that need to go directly to the owner or the owner's representative.
And, and, you know, with me doing delay, I'm not saying any council member who has concern or questions, they can, can, you know, they can ask. And to the petitioner, um, to Tracy, um, it's nothing against the project. I just need a little bit more detail, uh, because I will be the one answering to the people in District Seven. Uh, Uptown has requested that we please go to the table, and like any other council member has offered, just like any other council member has wanted to go back to talk to their community, I'm asking the same respect. From the developer, I'm asking a little bit more information, like an overlay on the site plan that we have, and able to get a better understanding. Um, I don't want you to think I haven't been doing my homework, because even though I'm quarantined in my home for some health issues, I've had people take pictures for me and send it to me. So, I'm not close-minded at all on what's going on. Um, I just think that we need to give that respect to our community, and I wanna know more about them twelve spots, um, spaces that we're going to, um, be losing. I also want to, um, I know this is gonna sound crazy, but I also wanted to see if we were to put meters, uh, how much funding we would have received for, for those meters being in place in those twelve spaces, because right now, I know the twelve spaces aren't being used, and people have concern about that, but we're talking twelve spaces. Um, I'm, I feel very confident that we can work something out where, um, both my feelings and my district's feelings and the developer can achieve what it wants. We're just asking for that time.
All right, well, there was a motion made for approval. Uh, I haven't heard a second.
Second.
There's a, so there's a motion and a second. Now, the motion and the second, Counselor Davis, was to approve the request of, of, um, to, to, to allow the variance. Counselor, uh, Counselor Thomas, was that not your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve that variance. Now, Counselor Davis is yours.
Mayor, let me, uh,
Mayor, let me, uh, I mean, I just, you asked for a second on Counselor Woodson's request and we've always honored a council member's request.
Yes, no, I, I...
I do have some comments.
I was, I know, I get that. I was trying to follow protocol and since we already had a motion on the table, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a second on that motion before we moved to Counselor Woodson's, uh, request and motion.
Glenn, what he's talking about right now, um, if you second it, you will, um, agree with the development and I will not get my two weeks to talk to my constituents.
Well, I will talk, uh, uh, I, I would like to speak to the first motion and my intention is to, uh...
To delay.
Well, my intention is to make a second on the motion for Counselor Woodson.
Okay. All right.
But I would like to speak to the intent of the first motion.
Okay. Well, there's no, there's no second.
First, the, uh... Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. If there's not been a second to my motion, it dies for the lack of a second, but we can certainly go ahead and talk about some of the items, um, on this. And I do have some information that I would like to share with council, um, that I've done some, um, investigating, if you will.
All right. And that's where I, we're trying to head with this. It's a little difficult, I know, with, uh, virtual, but I was just trying to make sure we didn't have a second for your motion and I, I have heard none, so that one does die. There is a motion on the table. And we can now discuss the different aspects of that. So Counselor Thomas, did you want to go ahead and proceed?
Well, one of the, um, issues that, um, has come up is the, the parking on Twelfth Street and Front Avenue. Uh, one of the things that, um, that I did, I spoke with, um, some of the, uh, instructors at CSU, which as you know, the CSU, um, education and nursing, uh, facility is right across the street from this hotel. And I talked to them about parking and what, um, what impact this would have on their students. Uh, I was told that first of all, most of their students do not park there because the parking is either two-hour or four-hour parking. And if they happen to go beyond the two-hour or the four-hour parking, um, it's a forty-dollar parking ticket. That's quite, um, uh, whack for parking and that most of the students either park, um, parked down in the garage across from the W.C. Bradley Company. The W.C., uh, that, that parking garage has spaces that are reserved for CSU students. Um, in talking with the, um, owner and developer of this property, I was told that they would, uh, agree in their parking garage, the ninety-space parking garage that they're going to build there, to have some parking available for, uh, CSU students in the same manner that the parking garage across from the W.C. Bradley Company has. Um, I think we can work out that parking. Uh, it is not Broadway parking. It is Twelfth Street and Front Avenue parking. Um, and this, um, I think this facility, in order for them to do what they need to do to make it, um, a viable facility, they're going to need that kind of, of, um, entrance and that kind of canopy and so forth. And so, uh, I, I'm willing to give, um, Counselor Woodson's, um, delay. Sure, if we need to do that, that's fine. Um, but I, I do want to emphasize that as far as the CSU students are concerned, I think we can take care of that and I think the owner is willing to do something to help take care of that. The parking, um, deck that they are talking about will be open to the public, uh, and so, uh, other, uh, um, others than the CSU parking, the CSU students can park in that deck. Um, there's, uh, some other parking around that, um, might be, uh, as convenient, um, as, as that parking deck. So, um, if we need to delay, uh, so Counselor Woodson can talk with her constituents, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I just would like to, I don't want to delay it too much longer though, because I know that the, uh, construction needs to go forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. And, um, oh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to, uh, go back to Counselor Thomas's, uh, uh, motion and, and let me, uh, let me say why. First of all, uh, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in myth trying to figure out, I've got different civil plans here. I've got one that was approved April third and then I've got a revision that was done on March twenty, uh, fifth with new intentions and usually my, my concern with this kind of stuff, it's usually all these things take place early on. I mean, construction's already started and all these plans and revisions should have been done a long time ago and now we're doing them, um, you know, just recently they were approved. Now, I, I don't know what's going on there, but that's one concern of mine. The, the canopy request, I look at, you, you've got, really you've got two separate requests here, okay? And I don't know how they're being co-mingled and why they're being co-mingled. Uh, I, I don't have a problem. I think the canopy needs to go ahead and, the canopy, the request or the resolution we have is an encroachment on the right-of-way to build a cantilever canopy. That's it. That's what the resolution says. Now, somewhere in the staff report, it says the elimination of twelve parking spaces. I don't think the parking spaces, the elimination of the twelve parking spaces has anything to do with the request to do a cantilever canopy. They need to go ahead, we need to approve that today, to be honest with you. It's a separate acqui- it's a separate request, but they need that from a standpoint to keep moving forward on their construction. You know, because that is part of the building and I'm not sure Newt Aaron or, or somebody could maybe answer that. There may be some construction aspect that needs to start happening now to make that happen. I don't know, but that would slow things down. The parking, the elimination of parking is a whole separate issue and that's not something that really needs to be done today. I mean, you're not opening the hotel anytime soon. It's a matter of erasing lines and, you know, and really what it looks like is they would like to have their private entryway and a drop-off, uh, uh, pickup, drop-off valet that they can move into their garage. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with a curb cut. It is several curb cuts. But, you know, my overall issue is in, a lot of these things we've been doing lately, um, you know, there's a lot of money that's going into these streetscapes. There's a lot of money that the taxpayers are funding for a lot of stuff and I just get the feeling like in, you know, in the last several years, we've been giving away a lot and we don't really get a return on our investment. So, I mean, I'm questioning the value of the elimination of the spaces. It's not a question of the use. Uh, I think it's a valid use, but still the elimination of those, uh, spots and then going through a public process, so everybody's on the same page. Um, I, you know, I think there's a way to make that happen. Uh, I would like to have that opportunity to talk with the developer and see if they would be interested, but I would like to propose maybe a compensation out of the tax revenue that would come in off of this project that would go into a tag fund, that we would take tho- those funds in compensation or in lieu of these parking spaces or maybe, let's say, put them in a, an art fund or some kind of improvement in the Uptown area, which is, which is, uh, uh, legal. You can do that. And, uh, in that way, there's, there's some consistency in what we've done in the past. I know with the W.C. Bradley Company, when they came and asked for us or something at Eleventh and Bay, they wanted some right-of-way to build their patio and all, that wasn't an issue, but they compensated the city for it. Uh, I, I think it's just creating a, a level playing field for everybody and the presidents across the board where, you know, everybody's treating the same and that there's some, some kind of value that's being, uh, considered in between. The, the, uh, Mayor, the, the last thing I wanted to throw, well, I'll tell you what. I'm going to hold because I still think there's two separate requests here and, I mean, I, I seconded Counselor Woodson's delay request because I felt like the parking could wait and, and it can be discussed. And I don't know where that's going on. I'd love to hear from my other colleagues, but I do think that the canopy, uh, uh, the cantilever canopy request as is, is a separate issue from what we're talking about with the elimination of parking spaces. So, uh, maybe there's a possibility of moving forward on that one item today, but holding back on the elimination of the parking spaces. And I'll just yield to my federal council members on that. But I, I would like to circle back as a observation on what we're doing here and how it relates not only to this whole hotel, but some other hotels. The city needs to try to work on that. We've talked about this before and I think it's a good time to have that discussion.
Well, Mr. City Attorney, um, what are they specifically asking for? I mean, we, I thought they were asking for the, uh, the encroachment going out into the, the parking area as well.
Uh, the resolution, the way it reads, Mayor, is the, uh, use of the right-of-way for a certain number of feet, um, and it doesn't specify a height for the canopy and it could include other things besides a canopy the way it's written now.
And that was my reason for the delay, Mayor, if I may, because I did look at the canopy being ma- probably we can go ahead and prove that and then the spaces, but it's not very clear. That's why I was asking for the overlay and that's why I was asking to meet because there were some questions there. Um, I don't have a problem with the canopy. I'm just having a problem on how it all works, but this request here is not very clear. Um, and again, Council Member, um, Thomas, thank you. Um, I appreciate it and so do my constituents' opportunity to discuss this a little further. I will promise you, it will not be more than two weeks. It'll be by our experience.
And I would say let's, let's, um, if we're going to delay it, let's delay the whole thing because if we, if we approve the canopy today and then come back in two weeks and say, no, you can't have the parking places, that impacts what the construction and what the company's going to do. So if we're going to delay it, delay the whole thing, come back in two weeks and move perhaps a clearer, um, explanation of exactly what, what owner wants to do.
Well, let me, let me just say, I'm looking, I'm looking at the civil plan and the, the canopy does not go out over into the parking spaces. It's on the right-of-way of the sidewalk. That's what we're talking about.
But then what I'm saying is if we don't give them the parking places, that may impact their use of the, um, their desire for the canopy. Let's just delay the whole thing and get it clear and make sure that everybody understands what we're approving and what we're not approving or whatever and it won't make a difference, you know?
Well, the motion was, uh, the motion was to delay, uh, the motion was to delay the whole request and...
Well, I'm just...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I've got our city engineer ready to, to clear up some of this and I think we need to hear from, uh, Newt Aaron and the owner, uh, so that some of we, that they would clear up some of the questions and observations that are being made that, and we've got the people here that can answer those questions. So I would respectfully request that, uh, my city engineer get to respond and, uh, and then Newt Aaron and Tracy Sayers. And maybe we can clear up some of this and if there's a delay, which it appears there's going to be a delay, then you can still delay it, but let's hear from them.
Okay.
I agree. That would at least, um, answer any questions that the counselors have at this present moment. It doesn't interfere with us having to delay.
So if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask, um, City Engineer Donna Newman to weigh in first and I'm going to ask that, um, uh, we, uh, uh, remove, allow them to come into the meeting from the lobby, uh, Tracy Sayers and Newt Aaron, uh, as simultaneously with, uh, Engineer Donna Newman speaking. So, uh, Engineer Newman, if you will, and Jeremy, if you will, allow Newt Aaron and Tracy Sayers into the meeting. Donna Newman?
Good morning. Uh, yes, when I reviewed the request, the canopy is directly tied to the drop-off area, which is where you get the removal of the parking spaces. And that's the reason, uh, the notation was made in the agenda report. Now, the, um, resolution is tied to the canopy and it does give the dimensions that was provided by the developer for the canopy, um, including the height. It does not mention the parking, um, because in the Uptown area, there really, the normal parking regulations have been waived.
Donna, this is Charmaine. What do you mean in the Uptown area, the parking regulations have been waived?
There's a zoning classification for Uptown, um, and because of the, uh, shared parking amongst all the businesses, the normal requirements for parking for, um, those type uses have strict guidelines and standards for the number of spaces, uh, for the use of the, the business and the size of the business.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask Newt Aaron and, um, Tracy Sayers to, um, sign on and, uh, weigh in at this time.
All right. Mr. Aaron?
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and all your counselors. This is Newt Aaron. We're the project managers for the development. Uh, what we can offer is that since, uh, City Engineer Donna Newman expressed some concern about, possible concern about the loss of spaces, we have worked on this plan to reduce the loss. Uh, and I have two things to offer for your consideration. One is, uh, Counselor Thomas is exactly correct that the loss of the spaces has to do with the drop-off and the canopy, so they are related very clearly. That's really kind of a preface. Uh, first thing I'd offer is that we have, are planning to build a approximately ninety space parking deck and we're not required to provide any off, uh, onsite parking, uh, as, uh, City Engineer Donna, uh, has said. So we're in effect adding to the available spaces for guests of the hotel as well as the public. These spaces, we're really not taking spaces away for, from other businesses, we're adding to them because the ones on the street won't be used for the hotel. Uh, they'll be available for CSU or from other businesses in the area. Uh, and it's a pretty significant add, uh, to tell you the truth. The, the former businesses on the site use street parking, uh, the Aaron Rents and the Phoenix Finance that was next door, both of which now are, are gone. Uh, so I'd like to offer that to you for your consideration. The other is, we've had one, uh, idea come up related to the number of, uh, ADA or handicapped parking spaces. Uh, on the CSU side of the street, there are three ADA spaces and on the Hampton side, as we have shown it, there are three more. In addition, there are two, one on the, uh, north and one on the south of Broadway handicap spaces. And there are four to be provided in the parking deck. This is a number of handicapped spaces that is greatly in excess of what would be required in a normal parking lot. Uh, if we could reduce the number of handicapped spaces on the Hampton side of Twelfth Street from three to one, we would be able to convert each one of those handicapped spaces into two regular parking spaces. So the loss would be reduced by two, uh, of on-street parking. So those are the two things. I, I would also like to offer just for your consideration, the reason that the street wor- like to offer just for your consideration, the reason that the street work was took longer to develop than the rest of the plans is figuring out the utilities in an old section of of Uptown and getting the right water lines and the right power service was very difficult. We had to work very closely with all the utility providers, and it just took some time to work out what what we needed to do. Uh, and that kept all this from being uh brought to the fore and as fast as it would. So I hope that has been helpful to you a little bit.
Um, I have a question. Um, Mr. Aaron, if it's possible, um, those twelve those spaces you're offering in the parking lot, aren't those aren't your um guests gonna be paying for parking? How would you be able to distinguish um which ones are are for the public? And how would you be able to ensure those parking spaces?
Well, of course, we can mark the spaces, uh, if that is appropriate, uh, Councilor Woodson. Uh, the the parking into the deck and out of the deck will be managed by a parking control system. Uh, the guests will be using their uh room key, uh, in effect, to be able to enter and exit. The public would be able to enter, and then they would would pay uh for a fee, which is, I understand, the same way it works across the street. Uh, so that's how that would work.
Okay. Well, I hope you um I hope you agree in my delay, so we can have some conversations, and I can get a a little more more um an overlay and a little bit more understanding of the parking spaces. Um, I am not against your project at all. Um, I think the canopy will be beautiful. I understand being able to go in and protect it from the rain and the wind and for drop off. I just um have concerns in my constituents doing reference to the twelve parking spaces and what will be available to them, and how would the controlling will be of the uh public spaces? Because if um I'm a guest or or I'm gonna be a guest and I'm getting ready to check in, and I see there's some spaces available, I won't pay the hotel. I'll use those um because it's free. So it's just some questions I have additionally. I just didn't wanna take up all the time today in discussing this. I'd rather for us to meet uh via conferences way, all of us to meet and have that discussion so that I can have a clear understanding and feel more comfortable. But again, I'm not against it. I just need better understanding in reference to the parking, because I understand we say there's plenty of parking. Understand that, but a perception is a reality. And my Uptown residents and my Uptown businesses, it's a reality to them. And um the response I've had from a couple people is that they didn't know anything. So I think it's only appropriate and respectful if we go back to the table and say, you know, I apologize you weren't aware. Here's what we propose. Here's so you get a better understanding. And then we can all see you see how it could be beneficial to all.
Councilor Woodson, I would be glad to uh assist you in providing additional information.
Thank you. I truly appreciate you.
Mr. Aaron, I got a question for you. How many uh how many uh rooms are gonna be in the hotel?
Eighty-nine, I believe.
Eighty-nine, ninety parking spaces?
Yes.
That's pretty much by code for the building structure, right?
I'm I'm sorry, uh, Councilor.
It's pretty much by code for the building structure, right?
By code. I'm I'm not sure what your question is, actually. I'm sorry.
A space per room?
The building code uh for this site does not require any onsite parking. As uh the city engineer.
For an eighty-nine-room hotel, they could park anywhere in Uptown, then?
The building code does not require any. That's 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 the way the law is.
Okay. What about the Hilton standards? Are they gonna require you to have parking spaces for the rooms?
Of of course.
Okay. Um, well, I don't have a drop-off point. Are you gonna have a drop-off point within the garage to to uh enter the hotel?
Not as such. We will have a place where the people leaving their cars can walk around to the front entrance.
You'll have an entryway through the garage into the hotel, into the check-in area?
It will be outside the hotel.
So you come in the front? You come in the front? That's your only entryway?
That's correct. Well, there's a corridor on the second floor. There is no public access from the ground level, uh, Councilor Davis. Uh, but on the second level, there will be a door that will be allowed uh access if you have a room key.
It goes to it goes to the lobby, right?
That that would go to the lobby. However, if when you're checking in, you would not have a room key yet. So you would.
I understand.
Provided.
Understand. And and that's okay. You gotta have a curb cut get into the garage. But you said there's gonna be a a uh a security pad at the gate. So you either gotta have a key or a code or some access to get in the garage, right? It's gonna be controlled.
Not not to get in, but to get out.
Not to get in the garage?
Not to get in. You cannot have public access if you you have to have a key to get in or saw or pay to get in. That's not been designed fully, but the idea is you can get in, but you'd either have to have a room key or pay to get out.
Right. Okay. Okay. And that's subject to whoever you choose to to use and pay for the parking, correct?
Probably.
I I don't think, you know, really, the CSU thing that came up, I really don't think that's a a problem. They have their own parking. Um, and Mayor, if I may, I I uh Mr. Aaron, one more question. Do do you have any issues with your cantilever canopy being approved today? So you move forward? Is there any aspect of construction that'd be delayed because of this?
The delay will not delay things. Uh, to answer that part of the question, uh, I would prefer that we try to work through all of it together, because the canopy might be impacted, the design might be impacted uh by whether or not there's a drop off.
Uh, well, you plan to build the canopy regardless, right? I mean, that's the way the plans read.
Perhaps not to the exact extent.
But you got yeah, okay. All right. Um, I'm just looking at the plans. I don't know if this is the correct approved plans from uh uh I guess it's the streetscape plans where it shows it in yellow from French and Associates. It's already marked.
Well, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but what I would say.
Looking at the approved plans from three revised plans of three twenty twenty three twenty-one uh from French and Associates on your streetscape plans and encroachment?
Uh, yes, I I believe that. I'm looking at the side of the plans.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, if it's not, I I was just trying to help you move your project along. Um, Mayor, if I may, one of the things, when we talked uh a while back, when we were talking about the meters in Uptown, one of the things I mentioned was you may want to look close at how the utilization of parking spaces throughout Uptown's gonna work with all our new hotels. And certainly, we're glad they're all coming in. And, you know, and and they're all gonna be different, but I mean, everybody uh everybody will function different. I don't I don't have a problem with that. It these a lot of it is business matters, business related. That's okay. That can all be worked out. I I do think that the city, though, the city's got to really look at this. And I'll tell you why, because people sometimes uh I'm gonna use myself as example, all right? Because a lot of times I'll go to town and uh, you know, I don't necessarily agree with the parking agreements of hotels, so I'm gonna look for alternative parking, all right? And I think that you got a lot of people that kind of think that way. Uh, let's just say, you got people that are cheap and they don't they don't wanna pay it, okay? And uh they're gonna look for alternative ways to to uh to move around. I think what you're gonna find out is that there's a lot of parking places down there that people are gonna park and just pull their totes over to these hotels uh to avoid paying for parking, which is gonna create a a problem. You got a number of rooms. You got a no at any given time, the number of people coming into Columbus. I think that's gonna have to be addressed somehow, because the small what I'm hearing, and I think is part of this discussion, is the small business owners are concerned about losing spaces or hotel patrons deciding to park in their spaces, and then nobody has adequate parking. Now, there are some places where it has two-hour parking, so maybe it's an enforcement issue. Maybe there's some meter aspect to it. But you've got some parking, for example, across the street with Sonovas. There's no timelines. So, I mean, people may start parking in places other than in a parking garage or a directed parking garage. That may cause some problems. I think that's something that city needs to get ahead of. Uh, I think the owners would probably agree. I mean, whatever you want can do, you wanna direct them to park in those garages. So trying to find some kind of enforcement or mechanism to get those people to park in these garages versus parking out on the street, I think is gonna be a uh and then you can add in the CSU school and everybody else. It's could could create a problem I think we need to get ahead of.
And I agree. I think that's why we had that that meeting. We'll have we'll probably have some subsequent meetings. And I think when you start seeing one of these hotels impact parking, and I don't I don't I don't know that it will. I mean, if they're if it's on their bill and they they got ninety spaces right there, you know. But we will you're right. We'll know, I think, as that sort of evolves, um, where some of the gaps are. Uh, and and it's a it's a moving it's a moving target at this point in the Uptown area. And uh, so I, you know, I think you make a make a good point.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, let me just say that uh Deputy City Manager Gutwin has a team, and she has presented to council. Uh, she's working with the CPD, with Columbus State University, with Uptown Columbus, Mr. Lottre, uh, and um some of the stakeholders. Uh, they've had they started the public hearing process, and what I saw was that people came out overwhelmingly in the initial meeting supporting parking meters. We didn't get to have the second meeting because of coronavirus and all of that. But those things that Councilor Davis mentioned are being um discussed and considered as they proceed forward with the study that will eventually come back to City Council with a recommendation.
And Mr. Mayor, let me let me just highlight this matter. You got two hotels that are right on top of each other, both of them have parking garages. And I'm gonna say what access, let's just say a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy rooms. If at any given time those are full, even if you took ten percent or fifteen percent of those spaces that people choose to park out on the street, um, you can see is that's gonna be a problem. Well, and I don't have the easy answer, but I would like, I guess, my whole point of this conversation is for the city to try to get ahead and work with these business owners to try to find a way to encourage the parking deck parking and a way to encourage the ones who are gonna try to scapegoat it and take the easy route and get them where they need to be so everybody has adequate parking. That's that's my only concern.
Yeah. And and I understand, and as we go through this parking study with parking or question.
And it's in it's in general, but it's not single in anybody else or any hotel business. It it's gonna be a general issue with all of them.
Well, and I get that. And so we are looking at a taking a holistic view of this. Our Uptown is evolving even more than, I mean, we thought we had an awesome Uptown. We we ain't seen nothing yet. I use the word ain't, because it's about to happen. And we have got to do a comprehensive look at parking, and and these hotels are coming online and adding parking. And and he's talking about ninety spaces. When I travel, whether Savannah, Augusta, I go with the assumption that when I pull in the garage, I gotta pay, you know? And and I use if I'm traveling on business, I use the cities, and I pay for parking. And so when people come to Columbus, they're out, they're just amazed that they pull in and we don't have to pay. You don't have to pay to park at a hotel. That just blows their minds, you know? And so I I think we're going somewhere with what, you know, we've got Tatts being developed, hundred and sixty-nine million dollars, W.C. Bradley, Rinke, she got his thing going, um, uh, Family Holders got their thing going, um, and 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 other developments. We we gotta have a a parking plan that works. And I'm glad to hear him say that they're building ninety spaces uh that will be available, and and it'll be added to our inventory. And and when people come to town, they're gonna expect to pay to park in that parking garage. So it's exciting to me, and I'm I'm happy. Yeah, I'm I I'm excited about the canopy. I don't know how you get excited about a can canopy. I'm excited about the canopy, you know? And and that blows my mind that I'm excited about a canopy. So but thank you, and 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 we're looking at the parking issue.
I have some questions. Because when Mr. Aaron was speaking, he said approximately ninety spaces. He wasn't specific. And then he said that there's eighty-nine rooms and ninety spaces. So that is one parking spot per room. And I don't see where there's extra parking space there. If the if the hotel is full, then all the parking spaces are going to be used. There's not gonna be additional room for public parking. And then they're going to be controlling the parking in an area in a block of Uptown Columbus that is growing right now. That there's a lot of new businesses going into that block. There's a lot of, you know, there's a limited amount of parking already, because we don't have the parking lot like we do in the one hundred block that people could use. I I'm afraid, I'm concerned, I'm not afraid, I'm concerned that it could hurt some of these new businesses that are that are getting started in that block, because they're because of the lack of parking.
Well, you know, I what I would counter with, though, is if you've got if you've got that hotel full, there's eighty-nine rooms full, that's gonna that's gonna really boost the opportunity for every business around there. I think that's why so many new businesses are going. If they see that hotel, they hope it is full. If there is a parking challenge, you know, we're gonna have to find a way to mitigate it. But I think.
I really hope we get in front of it this time. I just.
Well, on the other side of that, Mayor, i- if we've got ninety parking spaces and eighty-nine rooms, there's a percentage of people. I hope everybody's not driving to Columbus, Georgia. I hope they're flying in, you know? And so everybody at the hotel didn't drive. And 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 if they did drive, hopefully, there were more than one person in a car, you know? So I but but I've gone.
There's usually one car per room. I mean, yes, there might be two people in a car, but those two people will be in the same room together.
Well, and and after, you know, um, I I agree with the mayor. It's a good problem if that happens, because I've I've gone to hotels where I drove, and I got there, and they had signs out saying garage full. They had a good problem. And they but they directed you that there's a parking garage one block over or two blocks over, and they'll get you to the hotel. I I I've experienced that many times, where the garage at the hotel I'm staying at is full. So I I don't know how that works in that industry, but I've I've encountered that.
I'm not sure how this works. Is there are you am I on mute, Jeremy?
No, you're in. You're in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Isaiah, you're right. Uh, in Columbus, about seventy-one percent of the people drive. About twenty-nine percent get here by airplane or some other method. So uh, you're uh Charmaine, that gives you sort of a a yield of, you know, twenty to thirty rooms available a day. And the other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that we provide for the last ten years, we've provided twenty-four spaces at our twelve-twenty-two Broadway building, free to the public in the evenings and every weekend at no charge. That's also a buffer for us if we need it. But we'll also continue to make those available to the public like we always have. And I understand, we're a small business, just like the people down in our block, that, you know, they've been their customers have been able to use that space when they needed to go to their stores on the weekend and evenings. And so we're we're attuned to it. We're more than willing to uh. evenings. And so, we're, we're attuned to it. We're more than willing to, uh, uh, Mimi, meet with you. We just submitted our, our request in the normal process and we didn't really know about public access. And Ernie Smallman is the one who brought to our attention if we changed the handicap access areas, that in fact, we could probably add two more spaces back on that twelfth street side. So, look, we, we wanna work with you. Um, we, we don't, you know, and Glenn asked a question about Hilton's requirements for parking. There's very limited requirements in an uptown urban area from the franchisor. So, we've worked between all those and, you know, we wanna be a good uptown citizen. We operate businesses today in the uptown, in BID area. Um, we're, we're just as, we, our people experience the same parking problems as everybody else down there. So, we're pretty mindful to all that. But I do wanna tell you, it's incredibly expensive to build a parking deck.
Tracy, well, I wanna say, um, thank you very much for respecting my, my request. And as a business person and a person that you have other projects, you understand what I mean about being inclusive. There isn't, I haven't heard anything against the, um, canopy or, or what you're doing, just concerns about a better understanding about the twelfth parking spaces, a better understanding of, you know, the parking deck of people being able to park, charge, or free. And I didn't wanna take a lot of time, you know, today in, in some of the questions I received because I wanted us to go to the table, discuss it like every other council member ever done in the past and myself. Go back to the table, discuss it with my constituents and yourself. Come and have, find a happy medium. Come back to council and say, hey, we met, we found a happy medium, and now we're ready to approve the project. So, that is the reason why I'm asking you, and I appreciate for you agreeing to delay it for two weeks, two weeks. I don't think it's gonna hurt because you still have a lot of work to do.
There's a lot to do.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, Pop Barnes here.
Yes, sir.
Um, Isaiah, I know that Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin did an excellent job, um, in, um, investigating the parking down. And she had all the players involved and spoke to all of the businesses and whatever, to Columbus State and whatever. Uh, could we at some point revisit that? Because I don't think we really have a huge problem with parking as we may think. I know she did an excellent job. And I know she, um, I think she was gonna bring us a presentation. If she can, if, if she can bring that back again so that we can all look at this here, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We will be coming back. Uh, we did not close that out, uh, only because of the coronavirus that we had to cancel the final public hearing or public meeting. But we will be coming back to you.
And I appreciate that because I know that she took the time to bring all the players and, 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 um, I, and it was just an excellent study. So, if she would do that, I think, uh, I don't, I'm gonna be honest with you, Isaiah, I don't think we have the parking problem that a lot of people envision that we do. And I've met you at, in Savannah, when Savannah, you have to go to, go to the hotel, you have to find another place. I don't think we have that much of a problem. And I think she brought out a lot of really intrinsic things, um, specific to Columbus that really helped us in that regard. So, if, if she could bring that back and we can revisit it, I appreciate it.
Will do.
And Pops, this is Mimi. Thank you very much. I did reach out to Lisa too, to help us get a better understanding when we have our meetings. And I did ask her some questions and she's doing some research for me. But you're absolutely correct. I think from time to time, we do need to bring that presentation so our community is aware of the impact of parking. Cause as you and I both know, sometimes, uh, perception becomes a reality and it's hard to show what that is. But thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it, Pops.
All right. Any further discussion? We have a.
Oh, yeah, Mayor.
Yes?
Before we leave, whether we delay this resolution or not, we need to get language in the bottom of the resolution concerning the height of this canopy. It can be added right after the word length. We need something like with minimum ten foot five and a half inch height clearance. If we could just get everybody's approval, if that'll be added.
Someone will move to add those words?
I make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion second to amend it. As stated, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thanks.
All right. Now, there's a motion and second to delay for two, two weeks. Yes.
You can go ahead, Mayor. I, well, I wanted to ask the city attorney a question. I just wanna make sure that, uh, again, I, I still view this as two separate requests, but are there any, are there any, uh, to the requirements in this and turning this over, this encroachment over and turning the parking spaces over to a business entity? Should there be any legal requirements or understanding or any kind of documentation on any of this that we don't have today? Who's responsible or who does what with, with this space? Or is it still public space?
It's still gonna be on the public right of way. We're allowing an encroachment, uh, with the canopy, whether or without these parking spaces removed. That, that'll be a later decision. But the developer understands that if the city comes back and needs that, uh, canopy space, I believe that's in your agenda report that that's to remove.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the elimination of spaces, allowing the business to use that as their own entryway. Did we need any legal requirements and understandings to go along with that?
Not other than this approval of council to allow the encroachment.
Are you saying the elimination of spaces is, is an encroachment?
Yes, sir. Is the engineer still on the line? She might wanna comment on that.
I am. Um, I was just gonna note that that would be part of the permit, the removal of the parking spaces and that being the, the drop-off area. That would then be part of the permit for that location.
And the separate operation of that for the business, it's, they're just, they can do whatever they want?
Not necessarily do whatever they want. They can use it as a drop-off area if that is what they've requested. And that's what's on the plan. The permit's tied to the plan. So, if they change it.
Are you talking about the garage, that they can do whatever they want to do to run the garage?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the elimination at the upfront to use it as an entryway, a drop-off point, valet, et cetera. I'm sure that's what it's gonna be used as. And I don't have a problem with that. I just, I'm asking the city attorney, do we need the city, does the city need any legal documents to go along with that request to protect the city or to have an understanding? Right now, it's just an understanding that I see that if there's ever an issue with the canopy, the cantilever canopy, the city can make a decision on it. But I don't see anything dealing with issues out on the street, which could be traffic issues, et cetera. Does there need to be any kind of legal agreements for all parties?
I'm not aware of another agreement that's needed in this case, Counselor. Does Newman or you?
No, a- as I said, it would become part of the permit. And the plan is part of the permit, so.
Okay. I just wanna get that out of the way so they can, uh, move forward with, uh, any kind of paperwork and they ought to come back to there.
All right. We've got, we got a motion and a second to delay for two weeks. Are there any other discussion? All, all in favor of the two-week delay, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, any Counselor opposed? All right. Item number three is delayed for two weeks.
Thank you very much to my colleagues and yourself, Mayor and City Manager. Appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the next item on my agenda, um, is another allocation of, um, CARES Act funding. It's US Department of Justice Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant Solicitation. It's three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars that would go to the sheriff, police, and fire.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you get, made that approval? Or that?
I made the, the first approval.
Well, I'll second it.
All right. Motion and a second to approve item four. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any Counselors opposed? Pass.
So, again, that's, um, CARES Act funding, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven fifty-six. And so, we've shared with you CDBG funding and, uh, and then, uh, this, uh, US Department of Justice funding. And you know that we've got, uh, funding through Metra and we are tracking or trying to find every dollar that should be available to us, uh, as an entitlement city, uh, from those CARES Act funding. And so, we will be reporting back to you as we receive them and then how we anticipate, uh, dispersing those dollars. Um.
And Mr. City Manager, as I understand, all of those funds are restricted for specific purposes generally. For example, the Metra fund has to be spent for Metra. It can't be spent to pay your salary, for example.
That is correct. Yes. Yes.
But I will tell you that we have been in constant contact. I've had, I've had communication with the governor, with, um, Congressman Bishop, Congressman Ferguson, and I've got a scheduled call with, uh, Senator Purdue. And, and those on two separate issues. One is, uh, in the CARES Act, there existed the, uh, authorization for a governor of a state to allow up to forty-five percent to be distributed for reimbursement, actual cost reimbursement, reimbursement, uh, attributable to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, and, and they're working, ACCG and GMA are working on a formula that they presented to the governor, the City Manager, and Lisa Goodwin and, uh, Robert Futrell have put together, uh, some, some expenditures that they have, it, it was just a survey. They're not, those aren't the hard, fast numbers, but to give them an idea. Now, the, the meeting with, uh, Senator Purdue is to discuss this new proposed wave of CARES funding. Uh, and there's actually been some talk about trying to make sure that the budgets of local governments that are impacted might be eligible for some relief in being able to continue to provide normal, uh, services and, and fulfill their obligations to their, their communities. Uh, so that's still in the formulation stage, but we, I, I only mention it because I want you to know, as the City Manager said, every dollar that is available to help make our community whole as a result of this COVID-nineteen, we have people turning over every rock and looking under every leaf. So, we'll give you a, a more formal of reports once we get all this stuff tallied up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, under purchases, I've got Ridge Road Bridge at Cooper Creek. Um, it's two-point-two million dollars. Um, asking you to authorize execution of a construction contract.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve the Ree- Ridge Road Bridge. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any Counselors opposed? That passes.
Can I ask for, uh, who, but with an explanation of each one for, um, B and C?
Sure. And, and let me just say that, um, on the Ridge Road Bridge, for those watching via television, um, it's been a long time coming. And Counselor Pop Barnes, that we've met you on site. I think we've met Charmaine Crabbe out there on site about this bridge. Uh, but, um, project includes completion, complete demolition of the existing bridge, construction of new bridge structure, relocation of water and sewer lines, installation of curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, and guardrail. And I wanted to say that because, you know, I, I've gone out personally to meet City Counselors out there, uh, on this, and, uh, it's a long time coming. Um.
Isaiah?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank you. I still remember that day. And I know you were busy when you took time out of your schedule, I, I, and came out there and you were the ones, you said, we do need to do something, Counselor Barnes. And you had that same afternoon, you had those orange cones put up there. And the feedback of, of, of thankfulness from that area, that community. Sharon Bunn was out there with her husband and, and, and a student. Charmaine, uh, was out there. It was just such a, a feeling of relief. And trust me when I told, I told the people that I, you came out there because of the concern I had and you had those, you acted immediately. And so, I just wanna publicly thank you for coming out there and just seeing for yourself the hazardous condition and acting promptly and doing something.
Well, thank you, sir. And so, Mayor.
There is a, there is a motion for B and C. Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
Okay. Motion second to approve B and C. Any, uh, concerns or questions about either one of them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. That passes. Mr. City Manager, you run through it.
Yes, and, and let me just say on there, Ridge Road, um, Deputy City Manager Hodge is telling me on that bridge, it's a nine-month tan line. So, it's, it's gonna move pretty quick. Yeah. And then the ammunition for Police Department was number two. And, um, and then the third one is plumbing and irrigation supplies with West Georgia Plumbing Supply in the amount of six to one thousand, nine hundred, nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents on an as-needed basis. Uh, and, um, of course, plumbing supplies are used by our Public Works Department Facility Maintenance Division as needed. And so, those are the purchases, Mayor. And I am going to go into, I've got three updates remaining. Uh, the first one on stormwater, and then we're gonna do tax allocation districts, and then we're going to do the monthly finance update. And so, the stormwater update, I'm gonna turn to Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and Engineer Director Donna Newman. And they have some guests with them from Barge Design Solutions, uh, David Bishop and Scott Thompson. And so, Deputy City Manager Hodge or, uh, Engineer Donna Newman, would you, um, introduce, um, what we're going to be talking about today?
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, we have brought with us today our consultants from Barge. Uh, they work with us on all of our stormwater projects. Um, and we just wanted to provide you with an update of some of the, uh, key areas that we have been looking at. Barge has done a lot of work with, uh, with us on these and how we have prioritized these projects, uh, for your consideration. Uh, we will be, uh, coming back, um, to move forward with, uh, the, some of these as funding is available and also to talk to you about, uh, funding options, uh, related to this. But wanted to make sure that you're aware of these conditions, um, in some of the, uh, key areas of the city. And at this time, I'll turn it over either to Dave, David or Scott, um, to make the presentation. You should be seeing, uh, the presentation, uh, this morning on your screen.
Okay. Well, um, my name is David Bishop. Uh, good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, City Manager.
And, and, uh, David, let me just interrupt you to say that you need to explain, some counselors may not be, um, virtual, but on the phone. So, you really need to make sure you give a description that they can follow, um, on the phone.
Okay. Well, today, what we wanted to, uh, present is, uh, something that we've, uh, brought to the City Manager, um, and to Ms. Donna Newman and Ms. Pam Hodge, um, previously. And just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of what we are seeing, um, which is a, uh, we've got a town that's got some aging infrastructure that not a lot of people get to see. But, uh, when they do fail, uh, that's when people see it. And, uh, we're having, we've been noticing that's been failing at a much higher rate than in the past. And so, we just wanted to bring everybody up to speed where we are, what we've been seeing. And then, uh, we can talk a little bit about the financial aspect of that as well. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott to kinda start off the presentation. Um, and if anybody has any questions as we go through it, you would just stop us and we can explain anything that you got any questions about. So, Scott, I'll let you kinda take it from here. So Scott, I'll let you kind of take it from here.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Like we said, we want to just make you aware of the stormwater projects that we've seen in the past few years. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. This map, we have a map that shows all the stormwater projects that have been identified to date. And the purpose of this map is to show that these projects have been identified throughout the entire city. Really just try not to focus on downtown, but as the city as a whole. We'll get into more detail with these projects further down in the presentation. Next slide. What we did is we took each of these identified projects and assigned a scoring grade to them using the criteria shown related to safety, flooding, property type, utility impact, environmental impact, and traffic impact. We use this weighted score to generate a score and assign a grade A, B, C, D, and F to the project F, being the projects that need immediate attention, and A, not as critical. Next slide. Those are the results of that grading, and you can see the first six projects received the grade of F, meaning they need immediate attention. And then it goes down the line, D, C, B, and A. And one thing to note is these projects are graded this way currently. The longer that they are not completed, the grade will tend to degrade into a lower grade with needing more immediate attention. Next slide. So we have a few examples, working, starting with some of the F-graded projects. This is the gabion baskets along the River Walk, right in the downtown area below Bay Avenue at San Novus Bank. With every flood where the river floods over the River Walk, these baskets are being compromised. They're just, the foundation is being undermined by the flooded water. And every event worsens the situation. One key thing to note here, and the reason this project is of high priority, is there is a very large sewer interceptor line in that slope owned by Columbus Water Works that transfers wastewater combined sewer to the treatment plant. And really just cannot afford to compromise that line. Next slide. I have a few more pictures of this. You can see on the photo on the left, the baskets are supposed to be about eighteen inches tall, and it has sunk down to being only probably four or five inches tall that's due to the lack of foundation footing being washed out. The intent of this design was to have vegetation growing on the baskets which would stabilize it, but the maintenance that has resulted just hasn't worked out and is failing. This next project is out on Wenton Road. Probably everyone has seen the wall directly adjacent to the road. It is failing, water seeping through. We currently have a design. The previous gabion basket is under proposal. We have a proposal submitted to the city to redesign that project. Many of these projects are already designed but not yet constructed. As to this example of that, we have a design for this, and we'll talk about that more in just a minute. Next slide. There's many areas in the downtown historic district areas that fled during events, even small rain events, particularly on Fountain Avenue, which, as we were just discussing earlier, is kind of a high-traffic uptown area that is likely going to see a lot of tourism and new traffic. So these areas need to be addressed with the flooding and the parking spaces as well as undersized infrastructure to handle the combined sewer. This project is actually under current design by us. Next project. Lindsay Drive, slope failure is a project that's been identified for a while. Looking at some external funding for this project. It is out over on the east side of town near Culver High School, and the slope is continually failing. We have a design build contractor selected, and we are looking to get them under contract and just need to secure the funding. Next project.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if other people are having the same problem I am, but I'm not, the slides are not moving.
Okay.
They are for me. I don't know if others are having the problem you're having, Councilor Thomas.
Well, I'm watching it, I'm watching it on the CCG TV, and it still shows the...
It's moving for me.
Yeah, I think it's probably delayed on TV.
Well, it was way behind. It's good now.
Okay, all right, thanks.
This project is along the River Walk on the north side of town at Twenty-third Street. You can see, the photo on the left is from last May of 2019, and the photo on the right is current this month. This happened with the last flood event, and the slope is sloughing off and will continually get worse until it undermines the River Walk. This design is also complete and ready for construction. Next slide. This is a project that is related to a TIA project out on Buena Vista Road with the Divergent Diamond improvements. And the city caught this line during the review process, and TIA had not addressed, this is a culvert that crosses under the road. These corrugated metal pipes tend to corrode at the invert, and that's what's happened to these, and the head wall is cracked. And we approached TIA with this situation, and they noted that it was too late in the process for them to address under their contract, but they did note that they would provide funding to the city after the fact for the city to do a standalone project to make these improvements. The concern here is that they make the roadway improvements, and then these culverts fail and compromise the road after the improvements. Next slide. This is out on College Drive, across the street from CSU, up near the airport. And there's detention ponds that cross under the road, and they're undersized. And there's, they discharge into an open creek channel that runs behind a residential neighborhood, and the flume has been washed out, and there's a swimming pool adjacent to this property that will likely be compromised if there's further erosion. Next slide. This was fairly recently, a couple months ago, out on Broadway and Fourteenth Street Sinkhole at TESUS. The manhole had a void in the invert, and there's soil loss up to the surface, and it creates these sinkholes, and the mast arm for the traffic signal light was compromised in this particular instance. We have a design complete for this as well. Next slide. These are general examples. We have a project contract five where there are pipe rehabilitations and replacements identified. Many of these related to the corrugated metal pipes. Like I said, there's a lifespan of those, and we have, the infrastructure in the city has reached that lifespan, and we're starting to see these fail more and more in the recent past due to corrosion. And, next slide, please. Once the pipes fail, it pulls dirt from outside the pipe, into the pipe, washes it downstream, and creates sinkholes at the surface. Many of these are around the city, and Public Works addresses them best they can, but as the infrastructure continues to fail, the situation just gets worse. Next slide. This is an example out on Calumet Road. It is actually currently under construction. It wasn't due to a corrosion issue. It was a failed culvert, concrete culvert collapse in the road. But this has been redesigned and is currently under construction. This list here is basically an expanded list from the first color-coded list that we showed. The red is all the projects graded F, and it works down the list. You can see the column named Construction Cost Estimate. That was the cost estimate that was generated at the time the particular project was designed, which could have been up to six years ago. The second column brings those dollars to current twenty-twenty dollars with just an inflation of four percent. And you can see that total, second column is twenty and a half million dollars. Those are the projects that have been identified, many of them designed, but just need funding for construction. And the third column is an extrapolation of those dollars to twenty-twenty-five. Just noting that, you know, the longer we wait, the more it costs, and the more that these projects will degrade into a more immediate need. And then the project status column, you can see whether we have a proposal for the design, design complete, design underway, or just a change order needed. You can also note the two red F items at the below are projects that have been identified but will be allocated with other source funding, Nineteenth Street Water Abatement and Lindsay Drive that we saw previously. Next slide.
So, yeah, so the point of this presentation is the number one, kind of, make sure everybody's aware of what is occurring, and this is not just a Columbus issue. This is a nationwide infrastructure issue where we had the boom of all the towns in the United States, and those pipes, you know, got, everything got developed, and the pipes got put in the ground. And many of these pipes either had a twenty-five to fifty-year life expectancy. And like many cities all over the country, is they are well beyond those lifespans. And what we're seeing now is the failure rate going up. And I've been working with CCG for about fifteen years, being all stormwater, you know, consultant on designs. And what I've been seeing personally is probably in the last four to five years, I've been seeing the rate of failures go up more so than I had ten years prior. And so, as, you know, the city, we're working with Ms. Donna and Ms. Pam, you know, we've been diligent on, when the issue gets identified, we go look at it. We find out what the issue is. We come up with a design. But the hindrance is the funding is the biggest issue. As you can see in this table here, in the last six years, we've spent close to five million dollars on those repair projects or replacement projects. But also in the same six years, twenty million dollars of projects have been identified as being issues. Now, what I will say is the projects that you saw that were red and orange, okay, that was the Ds and the Fs, that's seven million dollars. Those are ones that are imminent. Something needs to get done on those very quickly, or there's going to be impacts to having to close down the River Walk, for example, or, you know, roads being have to be shut down because of failures and sinkholes getting developed in the roads. But the same thing that Scott mentioned, if you add in the Cs, which are very close, and when I say close, maybe the only reason they didn't fall in that D and F category is because the safety aspect probably wasn't as large because it was in a residential area versus a commercial area. But if those get pushed out too far, those become Ds and Fs. And like anything, when you get emergency work, you know, and obviously the cost of those products go through the roof to deal with those. So what I came to meet with Ms. Pam Hodge and City Manager and Ms. Donna on was, I just see a trend of projects getting identified more so than funding that is available to address those. And so I had a meeting with them, and they felt like that it was a good idea to come and present this to the mayor and city council to make everyone aware for seeing out there. And if there's, you know, potentially ways to provide funding for these projects, because I don't see them getting any better because of how much infrastructure that you have in the ground and the rates that they have been failing. And obviously, we've had a lot of, a couple of wet years that has definitely made those problems even worse. So, City Manager, I'll turn it back to you guys. If there's any questions for us, we will definitely take those and answer those in any manner. But that's what we want to present to you today.
Thank you, David and Scott. And Mayor and Council, when this was brought to me, I thought I needed to share it with you and the public, and to make the point that we have more challenges with infrastructure, more projects, obviously, than money. And we have got to put our heads together and figure out, how do we get out front of these stormwater challenges and protect our assets, our infrastructure? And so we don't have answers for you today, and I know you don't have answers. You probably have questions, and we'll try and answer those. But I think we've got to look for solutions for answers together. And so Deputy City Manager Hodge, I don't know if you have any comments?
Yes, just to add to the presentation, we receive funding from O-Lost as well as Stormwater Millage in order to fund stormwater projects. In the upcoming budget FY21, the allocation for stormwater is six hundred thousand from O-Lost and almost one point four million from the Stormwater Millage for a total of two million dollars, which is approximately what we receive each year in order to address stormwater projects, which is not going to provide the funding necessary to address the projects that we have identified currently and then moving forward. We will be able to take care of the first project on the list, which is the River Walk project right behind the San Novus Building. We'll be able to handle that project as well as the Wenton Road Wall project. But then moving into next fiscal year, we'll be able to do one project that's on this list to address those concerns. So funding is an issue, and we will be coming back with some options for council to consider on how to fund stormwater moving forward.
Well, and Deputy City Manager Hodge, to make a point, I'd ask David or Scott, put the PowerPoint back up. You said we would be able to handle, show them the projects we will handle, but then I want you to then point to the projects we will not handle because we don't have money and to show the severity of those things we will not handle because we don't have money. So can you put those back up to show what we will, we anticipate we can handle with funding that we have identified? And then the critical ones that we can't handle that need to be handled now, and they're F projects or D projects?
Yes. Jeremy, can you put the presentation back up? And move to the very end, Slide seventeen?
Well, I want, yeah, I want photos. Yeah.
Okay, so this project here, go back, Jeremy, one slide. Go back. The other way.
Just give me the names.
Um, hold on.
Could be the Gabby and Basket.
Yes, it would be slide.
Very first, very first photo, yeah. Yeah, very first photo, good phone slide.
Okay, so slide five. So this is the, um, Riverwalk project right behind the Sanovus Building. This project will be able to fund, uh, and move forward with this project being the one that's the highest priority. Uh, we'll also be able to slot, uh, fund slide seven, which is the Wenton Road Wall project. This project will be, um, able to fund and then go back to, uh, or go to slide, um, ten. Uh, we'll be able to address the Riverwalk project, um, in FY twenty-one. Those are the ones that we can fund, uh, currently with the allocation that we received in FY twenty and then FY twenty-one. Uh, those would be the projects. Now, there is funding for uh, the Nineteenth Street flood abatement. That's been a project that's ongoing. We're waiting on the final easement to move forward with that. So that project had been funded already in the past. Uh, the Lindsey Drive project is a, a Jima project, so that one is, is funding been identified through Jima. Uh, but those are the projects that we will be able to fund, uh, through FY twenty-one. Um, so, um, if any additional, um, you know, where it's here on these projects.
I want you to show the actual ones we will not fund, the, the, the slide.
Okay, so go to slide.
And, and, uh, City Manager, I will, while they're looking for that, is there, there are several projects listed here that we don't have photos of because they're more internal failures that will eventually show itself to the surface eventually. So some of those aren't listed, but I will, we don't have photos of exactly those, but.
And, and I'm asking so that, you know, if someone calls to report it or that there, it's not a surprise, we know that that project exists. So I need you to show the slide for those that you have.
Okay.
Okay, so if you start on slide eleven, Jeremy, that says, uh, Buena Vista Road Drainage. Uh, this one is not, we do not have funding identified to this one and just moving forward um, to the next slide, this, uh, project does not have funding identified or available. Uh, next slide. Uh, the Broadway at Fourteenth Street Manhole, um, this does not currently have funding, uh, available. Uh, next slide, uh, addressing any of the pipe failures. Um, we'll be able to, um, handle if there's a, a collapse or something that we need to address. We're not gonna obviously spend every, uh, penny that's been allocated to handle any emergency that comes up. Uh, next slide. You know, sinkholes will be able to address and, and Donna, if you want to add in, um, any information, uh, please feel free. Next slide. Uh, this project at Calumet is under construction. This is a funded project, uh, and that one is moving forward. Next slide.
Can I make a comment about Calumet?
Go ahead.
We do have a contractor under contract, and we also have the bridge, the replacement bridge that has already been ordered and delivered to the contractor. The delay, current delay is, um, Pratt Whitney has a major fiber optic line that runs through the construction area that they haven't been able to identify the location. So we have a meeting with them on Friday to see if they've made any progress toward that or how we might be able to proceed cautiously, of course, trying to locate that line and get the construction moving forward.
Okay, and so if you'll go back, Jeremy, to the slide, uh, yeah, that one. Okay, so those things that we will not be able to do, how much, what's the total cost for those that we're not able to do in just the ones that you showed, the, the Fs and the Ds?
Uh, we're probably uh, around four million. It's in the F or the D that does not have funding identified.
Okay, that we would not be able to do, right?
That's correct.
And what's the total?
None of the Cs, none of the Cs would be at that five.
What's the total of all those that need to be done?
Go to the next slide, Jeremy. So if you look right here, uh, the, the remaining is the twenty million nine, uh, four ninety. So what she's, what she's mentioning is she has around, uh, Pam, you're saying around two million dollars for this year, and then, oh, what is it for twenty-one?
Yeah, around two million for twenty-one. So we have about four million available.
So you would have sixteen million still remaining that, um, is already identified, not counting anything that we are seeing get identified from this point, you know, forward for the rest of the year.
So to do all of those from, all the Fs down through that one A would be how much?
Tw- twenty, twenty million four hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay, that we need to be able to do all of those things. Is that right, Deputy City Manager Hodge?
Yes, that's correct.
So we need about twenty-one to twenty-five million dollars?
That's correct.
And, um, for those things we can't do. But let me just make a, a point here. Ju- just 'cause we've been talking about the Liberty District, and we're gonna talk about that a little later. How much did we spend on the Sixth Avenue flood abatement project that came through the Liberty District?
Forty-three million.
We spent forty-three million on that one project?
Yes, sir.
And all of these total how much?
Twenty, twenty and a half million.
Okay, I just wanted to make that point. So, um, any other questions regarding, uh, the stormwater update?
Yep, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, have we, uh, are we staying in contact with our fellow representatives about, uh, helping us in some of these matters? Uh, I know they talk about these things all the time. I'm just curious to, are, are they putting in a good workforce?
Well, um, you know, the President talked about infrastructure projects. And, um, and, and that is still being debated in Congress. And the one position we want it to be in is we show this project, uh, show these projects to you is that we want shovel-ready projects in the event they come through with infrastructure funds. And so infrastructure is on, funding is on the agenda of, uh, in Washington, I, I'll, I'll say. So, um, I think GMA and ACCG have kind of surveyed on, you know, infrastructure project needs and, um, and, and, and this should show you that we are trying to be forward-thinking. We're trying to have shovel-ready projects that we can communicate this information to the state or Washington in an instant. And so that's the position we're trying to place ourselves in.
Okay, my second question is, and I receive, uh, a lot of calls. They ask me with the damage on the Riverwalk, uh, some of the damage that was shown today on these slide presentations, are we, do we receive Jima money? Do we receive any, uh, rehabilitative or reconstruction-type funding for this type of damage that occurs quite often, or are we having to handle it with in our own funds, uh, within our own, within the city's budget?
Well, we go after Jima money, and, and if they go back to, there was one slide that showed that we were waiting on some Jima funding. If, Jeremy, could go back to that slide, but, uh, of course, our position.
I talked about it in the past.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, I will say that we just have completed three slope failure projects. That was Jima-funded due to the, uh, flood that happened a couple of years, you know, two or three years ago. And they did fund those due to that particular, you know, uh, flooding event. So this one is now failing similar to the ones that we made the repairs on. Um, but it did not occur during a, you know, one catastrophic event that they can tie it to. So I'm not saying that it's not available, but that's how we got the previous ones funded.
Well, well, and I, and I want to.
Are these all separate areas, or are they, some of these the same areas that have failed?
They're all, they're all in separate areas. Some was all the way close to the, you know, all the way at, um, what park was that? Just lost it. Almost down to the South Plant, the Water, Waste Water Plant. And then we've had them all the way up to Bulldog Bait and Tackle area, and then we had them, you know, this one's all the way on the north end.
The, the areas that we fixed in the past, we, they haven't been compromised. We're having no problems with those, correct?
Correct. We've monitored those since the construction, which they've been built for a little over a year and a half now, and we do not see any negative impacts on those.
Good.
So and Counsel Davis and to, to Mayor and Counsel, and Mayor, you know this, but I just want you to, to, to be assured that when there's an event, we go after FEMA dollars, Jima dollars, uh, related to hurricanes and everything else. We always have a team that we, we, we're working, and the mayor mentioned, um, about, uh, the COVID nineteen. Uh, we've got a team of the two deputy city managers, the Finance Director, Robert Frutreal, Homeland Security with Riley Land, and, uh, with our HR Director, because we want to cover from personnel expense to every, uh, we're looking at hospitals and, um, uh, just healthcare. We're, we're looking at every category, trying to assemble any expense that even they expensed that we potentially can be reimbursed on. So that team is working every day. And we do that for every event, whether it's a hurricane, tornado, I mean, a tornado or any other event. I just want you to know that we go after those dollars. So any other questions on stormwater? If not, I want to thank, um, David Bishop and Scott Thompson with Barge Design Solutions for your work. You have, um, I can't thank them enough, working alone with our engineer Donna Newman and Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. Uh, so thank you, David. Thank you, Scott, for joining us today. And with that, uh, Mayor and Counsel, we're gonna go to my next topic, and that's tax allocation districts, all of them. Uh, but, uh, we're going to talk about all of the tax allocation districts, but we're gonna spend a little bit more time on the Liberty District, uh, because it's been in conversation here, uh, recently. Where there, there've been questions asked, uh, about the Liberty District, um, the Liberty Theater. Uh, there's been questions asked about, uh, investment in areas, and so uh, we are even gonna talk about investment a little bit at the end of the tax allocation districts, um, discussion. And so Deputy City Manager Hodge, if you will, take it from there.
Sure. Jeremy, if you can load the tax allocation district update. So I'm just gonna go through the, um, each of the, the districts, uh, talk about their characteristics. Um, we do have seven tax allocation districts. Fort Benning Technology Park, which is improved in December of twenty fifteen. Uh, the River District, which has three TADS, approved in March of sixteen. The Midtown, there was two districts approved in October of sixteen, and then Midland Commons was our most recent one. Uh, and that, that was approved in February of eighteen. Uh, the Fort Benning Technology Park, um, is a, was approved in December of fifteen. That was our first one. Uh, developed for a hundred and eighty-three acre business park. It covers, uh, one thousand two hundred and thirty acres. Uh, contains approximately three point one square foot of commercial industrial space. Um, access to US five twenty to Custer Road was developed under the TIA project. That was one of our first, uh, TIA projects. Uh, there is a proposed interchange there at I-185 and Casita Oak, Casita Road, which will also help, um, access to this particular site. Uh, there's currently no development, um, has occurred at this proposed, uh, business park. So there's, uh, building permits. What we've pulled is the building permit. This does not include any site work, just building permits. In that particular TAD, we've had two, uh, for eleven thousand dollars, and then two resident, or three residential, uh, building permits pulled since the TAD was initiated in twenty sixteen. Uh, the River District has three separate redevelopment areas uh, that cover one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five parcels, eight hundred and forty-six acres, uh, approximately just over a thousand existing structures. Um, in the Sixth Avenue Liberty District, that encompasses two hundred and ninety-six acres. Uh, area that's been significant infrastructure improvements, which I will go through. Uh, the major project that took place in the Liberty District, uh, contains the Liberty Theater, uh, the jail, South Commons, and several industrial areas. We've had little, uh, growth in that particular area. We've had sixty-eight commercial permits pulled for just over thirty million dollars since twenty sixteen. And again, these are building permits. Uh, not all the site work that goes, uh, with a particular project. Out of that thirty million, fifteen was the Housing Authorities Project, and then Claflin, just under, uh, five million. And we've had eight residential permits pulled since twenty sixteen, uh, for two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Uh, the second, uh, redevelopment area in the Uptown is the Uptown District, covers a hundred and ninety, ninety-five acres. Uh, traditional, our downtown area of the community, and there has been uh, significant investment and improvement in this particular area of our community. Uh, we do have two, uh, pending TAD applications, uh, for development. Uh, one with W.C. Bradley, a total of a hundred and sixty-seven million dollar development. Uh, there is a TAD application which has been presented to Council, as well as the Ram Hotel. Uh, their total, um, development is twenty-seven point five million. So again, significant investment in that Uptown District. Uh, building permits since twenty sixteen, uh, ninety-seven of, for a hundred and eleven million dollars uh, since twenty sixteen, and seven, uh, residential, uh, for sixty-eight thousand. And then the last in that, uh, particular, uh, TAD was the Second Avenue City Village redevelopment. That covers three hundred and seventy-one acres. Uh, majority of the mills were located, uh, in this particular area. Thirty-five percent of the housing in this particular area is seventy-five years or older. Uh, includes City Village and the Bibb City area. Um, Bibb Mills and Johnson Mills have both been converted to a event center or, uh, residential usage. And building permits pulled since twenty sixteen, twenty, uh, commercial building permits for five point two million, and twenty-five residential permits for seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, the next was the Midtown East and West, uh, approved in October of sixteen. Uh, this is the densely developed area in the core of our community. Uh, the, the West, uh, TAD is made up of three hundred and twenty-five acres. Uh, the East TAD, uh, in Midtown is made up of just under ninety-three acres. So on the Midtown East, uh, we've had twenty-two, uh, commercial building permits pulled for a total value of four point three million. And this is the area there close to one eighty-five. We've had zero, uh, residential permits. In the Midtown West, we've had forty commercial permits for thirteen point seven million. Uh, residential permits, uh, thirteen for a hundred and five. Uh, Midland Commons, which is the most recent, uh, TAD, was done in, uh, February of twenty eighteen. It's the site of the former Swift Textile, um, uh, development. It was eighty-five point three nine acres. Its, uh, potential is right there by Flat Rock Park. Uh, and road improvements, uh, which you can see are ongoing now for the J.R. Allen Parkway. Allen Parkway. Uh, the site was rezoned for a PMUD in 2018. It is currently under development, although we show zero, uh, permits. Again, these are building permits, and the work that they're doing out there currently is site, uh, so we have not received any, uh, issued any building permits for that particular, um, TAD at this time. Uh, the balance in the TAD funds, again, the, uh, balance in tax allocation districts would be any increment over where the baseline was set when the TAD was adopted. Uh, so any changes to the digest would, uh, those taxes generated would go into the TAD district. Uh, the Fort Benning Technology Park has twelve thousand dollars, almost thirteen thousand, uh, in the River District. The Uptown District, which is where we've seen most of our, uh, development, is over a million dollars. City Village, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, the Liberty District, twenty-six thousand, uh, Midtown East, twenty-three thousand, and Midtown West, uh, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And at this point, we have not, uh, received any increment in the Midland Commons, uh, TAD. So just specifically looking at the Liberty District, we've had a lot of questions come up about the Liberty District. Uh, there was funding allocated in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, through the SPOLOST, five million dollars, uh, utilized to date is just over three point six million. Uh, that was used for property acquisition, just under two million dollars. Uh, the Ma Rainey rehabilitation, a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, there was some additional grant funding, which I'll cover, uh, in, in a minute. Uh, the Resting Gardens, also known as the Black Cemetery, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. Uh, we did some streetscapes in that area out of this SPOLOST dollars, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Uh, there was a contribution out of the Liberty District, um, SPOLOST funding for the flood abatement of a hundred, of six hundred and forty-four thousand. Uh, there was signal and lighting of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, and then other expenditures, environmental appraisals, engineering services of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, the balance in these, uh, this funding is one point three million. Of that, six hundred thousand has been committed to the Dragonfly Trail Connection, uh, which was presented to council. This would be the connection from MLK and to the river. Uh, so this is just, uh, the chart that shows the city-owned property, um, in the Liberty District, uh, utilizing the, uh, SPOLOST funding, uh, to purchase. You can see all those highlighted in, uh, the lavender color, uh, the Ma Rainey House. Uh, this was, uh, the rehabilitation of the Ma Rainey House, uh, that was done several years ago. Uh, the Resting Gardens, Slave Cemetery, uh, this is what it looked like before. Um, it's just off of Sixth Avenue, and you can see there was, uh, major improvements made to this particular area, uh, to honor this location. Uh, other Liberty District investments, uh, as the city manager mentioned earlier, there was significant investment in this particular area for flood abatement, as well as street, streetscapes of forty-three million dollars. This included the parking lot that's there at Sixth Avenue and Ninth Street. Uh, we also received a grant, uh, for the Ma Rainey House of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, uh, Veterans Parkway Streetscapes of five million dollars, and then the Dragonfly Trail, uh, connection that will be, uh, going through the Liberty District of nine hundred thousand, and that is currently under design. Uh, these are just some pictures. I always find these pictures fascinating. Uh, this is what's under Sixth Avenue. Uh, this is part of the flood abatement project. You can see, um, this is what you don't see, uh, on Sixth Avenue. This is what you see now, uh, so just know that that is under Sixth Avenue when you're driving down, uh, that particular area.
Well, and, and Deputy City Manager, let, let me just interject to say that we were having serious flooding issues, um, in the Liberty District. And this flood abatement project, uh, came about, uh, to, um, not eliminate it a hundred percent, but to reduce the flood, and they often would call us from Hosey Chapel Church on Eighth, and the basement, it, it was all flooded, Liberty flooded, and, and so we went in and we did this massive flood abatement project that ended up costing us the forty-three million dollars that you highlight. And along with what you just showed them, that's beneath, uh, below Sixth Avenue, the street that you ride on, we streetscaped that street, and we put the, um, decorative light poles in the middle of the median that you can see there, and, uh, the trees are planted, and we beautified the area along Sixth Avenue. And I just wanted to make that point about the flooding that was occurring, and we went in to, uh, help alleviate the flooding issues in the Liberty District.
And this, there was also a project, uh, that was included just, uh, right in front of the Liberty Theater, uh, kind of a before and after, uh, picture, uh, to address, uh, issues right in front of the Liberty Theater. Uh, this is the parking lot there that was, uh, constructed at Sixth and Ninth Street. And just some history of the Liberty District, you know, the master plan was adopted in, uh, two thousand and three, two thousand and four time period. Uh, the Housing Authority had proposed investment of approximately thirty-three million dollars in two thousand and twelve for the mixed-use housing development, uh, parking, green space. Uh, at that time, there was, uh, significant opposition, uh, which led to the redevelopment of Booker T. Washington on the existing site where you see it today. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, there was a Liberty District Committee, uh, that was established. Um, there was five public meetings were held in the district to obtain input from citizens about the future of that area. Council appointed the Citizens Review Committee, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, there were eight committee meetings that were held between October of two thousand and eighteen and October of two thousand and nineteen, uh, and Director Rick Jones has made presentations to council. We had significant issues with, uh, participation, uh, in those committee meetings. Um, just to outline some of the infrastructure, which this particular.
And let, and let me just intervene in here. I ask Deputy City Manager Hodge to put this slide in place, uh, or, or on this presentation, because we, you know, I keep hearing all this chatter, and, and I think it's important that I share with the mayor and council and with the, the citizens of Columbus where the money is being spent. And so I ask her to put this slide here in, um, to, to show exactly that. And so why don't you proceed, Deputy City Manager Hodge?
Sure. And actually, this, this is, uh, three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars of infrastructure, which does not include the forty-three million. This was actually just the last ten years, and the forty-three million was prior to that. So, um, South Columbus of that three twenty-seven, uh, that is two hundred and twenty million dollars of infrastructure. North Columbus, uh, just under nineteen million.
And so, and so you, if you add the forty-three million with it, it's.
Two hundred and sixty-three million.
Okay.
Uh, East Columbus, twenty-one point eight million, uh, Uptown West Columbus, thirteen million, uh, the Panhandle, nine hundred and thirty thousand, and Midtown, uh, fifty-two million.
And so, and so how much is, uh, from North Columbus down to Midtown? What is, what's that total?
A hundred and seven million.
A hundred and seven million for North Columbus, East Columbus, Uptown, uh, West Columbus, Panhandle, and Midtown. Is how much?
A hundred and seven million.
And we've spent two hundred and twenty million in South Columbus, plus the forty-three million flood abatement. It's two hundred and sixty.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Um, and I'd also, uh, just want to end here with questions, uh, to thank also Rick Jones, who, um, you know, was working with me on this presentation, if there's anything he wants to add, uh, as well as Charlotte Davis. Uh, she's been working very hard to produce maps and, uh, building permit information, so I appreciate all of her input as well.
Pam, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is Mimi. Can we go back to the slides of, uh, that shows the properties that the city owns? So you said everything in blue is what we own?
Yeah, the, the lavender, the light purple lavender color? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, the live, okay, okay.
So here you can see the Liberty Theater is kind of right in the middle. We own everything around that property.
The little, the little brown dot, is that it right there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then everything around it, we owned it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And everything over here?
So, uh, this is, uh, the Public Safety Building, um, that's here, and, um, I don't know if you can see my cursor?
No, I can't see your cursor.
So, um, the other whole block that you can see that's highlighted in purple, uh, that's just north of the Liberty Theater, that would be the Public Safety Building, and then just to the left of that is the Annex Building.
Okay.
Just to orient you on, on where we're at.
Okay. All right. And then, um, all right, I'll just, I'll ask you a lot of, another question, but I'll ask you later in reference to this here, in reference to, um, to development.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'll, I'll call you, and then we can, just remember to put this aside, because I'm going to ask you some questions using this in reference to the Liberty District. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And it was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
Um, while we're talking on this, it just, um, I wrote the other day, you know, we've been talking about a lot of stuff down in some of these areas that have been presented today, and I took a little ride in some of those areas, and it just kind of occurred to me that, that, you know, there's still some things that I think that we need to accomplish, um, as far as cleaning up some of the, uh, some of the derelict properties. Um, so I, I mean, I, I'd like to bring that to the attention of codes inspection or somebody, uh, down Sixth Street, Fifth Street. There's some places down there that just, you know, I just brought the question to my mind, why are they still there? They, uh, they really need to be demolished, and, you know, I think a lot of the funds that we talked about, that was the purpose and the intent. So, uh, could you get somebody to check on those places and see if we can, um, continue to, to do the good work that's been done down in that area?
Absolutely. And, you know, if it's a historic structure, we have challenges, but, uh, we will certainly do that. Uh, and I agree with you, and you've talked to me about it before, you know, so I, I know what you're talking about.
Well, and you got, you actually, Mr. City Manager, to your credit, and I want to thank you, you, I mean, you, uh, Council Huff knows, the places we talked about before, I mean, they, they got on them pretty quick. Matter of fact, one of them was, had a lot of, uh, asbestos, and it took a while, and it was costly, so, but you did get that done, and I, I think there's some other ones there. They may be just so overgrown in the area that, that is kind of, kind of off the beaten path, but, you know, it just kind of clinging that area up from an eyesore. There's still a couple of eyesores here and there, and that would be a good thing, so thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Uh, any other questions on, uh, TADS, tax allocation districts? Um, if not, Mr. Mayor, we're going to move on to the monthly update from, uh, the finance update from our finance director, Angelica.
Mr. City Manager, I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, the, um, generally, the, the rule is, the law is that the school district and the, and the city, um, participate in funding of the, of the TAD. Um, generally, the school district gets sixty percent of the tax money, and the, and the city gets forty percent. My question is, has the school district agreed to participate in all of the TADS except the Midland Commons TAD? Are they, is there sixty percent?
Yes.
Coming into the fund?
Yes.
That, that would be, yes.
Yes, that's correct. Except for Midland Commons.
But it is not at this point Midland Commons.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and let me just say too, before I proceed, uh, just to make another point about the Liberty District, and, and I'm sure the mayor's chief of staff is on the, in the meeting, but, uh, mayor's chief of staff came to me and wanted to do, when he was president and CEO of Uptown, and wanted to do a tax allocation from Uptown, for Uptown. And I said to him, you know, yeah, I can support doing a tax allocation district for Uptown, but I need you to help with something. And I said, when you do it for Uptown, I need you to figure out how to pay to get a TAD done for the Liberty District area. And I said, you know, and we're going to be all in if you do. And he, I'm sure the mayor's chief of staff is on the phone, but that's how the Liberty District TAD, the consultant and all, got created and paid for, because it was paid for through the president and CEO of Uptown, because I asked him to. And so I just wanted to make that point. It didn't just come about as a tax allocation district. Uh, it was, it came about with the support of Uptown Columbus, um, and, and I, I want to take the opportunity to thank him for paying to help get that done. Uh, it didn't come out of Liberty District dollars and, or Liberty Theater dollars, it came out of Uptown. And so I, I wanted to make that point of how it became a, a tax allocation district before we leave that, uh, tax allocation districts. And so with that, I'm going to call on, uh, Finance Director Angelica Alexander, um, for her monthly finance update.
Good afternoon, Mr. City Manager. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, thanks for the heads up there, Jeremy. Um, I'm hoping that you all can see the monthly finance, uh, snapshot that I have up on my screen here. Um, this was, um, sent out to, um, you all via email, and it, it is also posted on the city's, um, website under the monthly finance reports. Um, but just starting to the right side of the snapshot, if you're facing the screen here, um, starting with the general fund, um, the general fund is up, um, eight point six seven percent. Uh, the other local option, sales tax fund, is up four point two one percent. Uh, one thing I'll make mention of as far as the, um, percentages here, these are year-to-date totals. So although, um, it was reported during the budget review session last week that we were down about four percent, um, in our sales tax collections from March of 2020 to March of 2019, year-to-date, we are still up four point two one percent. Um, we'll obviously continue to, to closely monitor our, um, sales tax collections. Uh, we have been looking at, um, collections throughout the, the state of Georgia, and, um, just some, uh, just to give you an idea of what other municipalities are experiencing in terms of their sales tax, um, collections. In Fulton County, which houses several cities in the metro Atlanta area, um, they've seen declines of about eighteen percent. Um, in the Savannah-Chatham area, um, they've had declines of about eighteen percent. Um, Macon-Big saw declines of about ten percent. Augusta-Richmond saw declines of about ten percent, as well as Athens, uh, Clark County, um, saw declines of about ten percent. So, um, again, um, our difference for, uh, March's collections was only about a four percent, uh, decline from, uh, March of 2019, and again, we'll, we'll closely monitor that as we proceed on through, uh, this fiscal year and into FY twenty. proceed on through, uh, this fiscal year and into FY twenty one. Um, the Starwater Sewer Fund is down six point two seven percent. Um, you will see here, most of the tax-supported, um, funds are down, and that is largely due to the change in the motor vehicle abhorrent tax. Um, True Up, that's rated to, uh, that's, um, due to the title abhorrent change that was effective in July, so it'll be down this year for the, um, tax-supported funds, and hopefully we'll see that sort of stabilize, um, in FY twenty one, where we make those comparisons. The, um, Paying Fund is down six point one two percent. Medical Center Fund down six point one two percent. Integrated Waste Fund is down point five eight percent. The Emergency Telephone Fund is up five point nine five percent. And again, the state took over the collections of, uh, the E nine one one surcharges back in January of twenty nineteen, and so we saw significant improvements to, uh, those collections since the state, um, took over that function. The Economic Development Authority Fund is down, um, six point one two percent. Uh, the Debt Service Fund is up fifty point zero six percent, and that is due to the bond refunding that we had in twenty nineteen, and the debt service payments related to that. The Transportation Fund is up four point four nine percent. Trade Center Fund is down eight point two one percent. And although the, the decline in the Trade Center revenue is obviously due to events that, um, have been placed on hold, the expenditures are down for this fund as well, um, at about ten point five, uh, percent. So revenues are down, but expenditures are down as well. Uh, the Bull Creek Fund, Golf Course Fund is down eleven point two four percent. Uh, Oxmo Creek Golf Course, um, is down eighteen point, um, three five percent. And the Civic Center Fund is down, um, point six eight percent, and again, all the revenues are down, they are tied to expenditures which are, uh, down point zero one percent as well. Uh, moving further down on the right side of the snapshot into the other local option sales tax public safety summary. Um, year-to-date, we've collected about twenty point, um, one million dollars in, um, revenues, uh, for the other local option sales tax fund, uh, the public safety side, um, which accounts for about seventy percent of the revenues that we receive from that, um, collection. Expenditures are just over twenty one million, um, for, uh, year-to-date for, uh, FY twenty twenty. Um, moving down to the infrastructure summary, we've recorded about eight point five million in total revenue, um, on the infrastructure side, which is about thirty percent of the, of the, um, sales tax collections, with about ten million in expenditures year-to-date. Moving over to the left side of the snapshot here, um, just pointing out, um, in the general fund, the budget for our revenues for FY twenty is about one, uh, one hundred fifty-two point eight million dollars in budgeted revenues that we anticipate to receive in FY twenty. And year-to-date, we've collected about a hundred and thirty-seven million of that, which is roughly ninety percent of our budget. And this is as of April twenty twenty, we've collected about ninety percent of our ex- expected, uh, revenues for the general fund. Uh, moving down to the general fund expenditures, you'll see here that the goal, um, as of April twenty twenty is to be above sixteen point, uh, six six percent. Um, the departments that are highlighted here in yellow are the ones that are be, uh, have exceeded that goal. Uh, just starting out with the city attorney's litigation, um, we're obviously still defending several million in claims with that. The employee benefits, uh, overage is due to the annual death benefit and major disability payments that we make. That, um, uh, division within itself shouldn't, will not be over budget, um, as we close out FY twenty. Um, the real estate, uh, department is due to the building maintenance and repairs for legacy terrorists, but there's also, uh, rental income, uh, revenue that we receive, um, to offset those expenditures. And then the last department is the Public Defender's Office, and that is due to the monthly contract that we pay to the state for the Public Defender's Office to provide those services to us, this contract is paid, um, in advance. So overall, uh, for the month of April, um, the total expenditures for the fund, um, cap out at about one hundred and eighteen million, or about, um, twenty-four, uh, percent of the budget that was, uh, adopted, um, for the fund, uh, which is well above, um, our goal. So that, uh, Mr. City Manager, is the, um, finance update, and I will be happy to answer any questions from council, um, at this time.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, Council, any questions? Here none. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I've gotta apologize, I told you earlier that we would have, uh, Deputy City Manager Hodge uh, included, uh, Mr. Brian Celito from the Chamber to talk about investments, because that had been questioned as well in the Liberty District about investments. So, uh, I'm gonna ask Deputy City Manager Hodge to update you, uh, or bring on Brian Celito at this time to talk about investments.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
Hey, Brian, how are you?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the opportunity. I've been, uh, watching your meeting now for about three and a half hours, been very informative, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you. Deputy City Manager Hodge asked me to, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, some of the decision factors that uh, developers, decision-makers, investors, that are looking to place projects in our community, uh, kind of what, what are their, uh, what are their factors, and, and, and the work that we're doing to position Columbus and the region, uh, and, and the city's opportunities for such investment. Um, I, I like to think of it in really kind of three buckets, uh, in the work that we're doing. Industrial and office-type projects, uh, also retail and commercial projects, and the last bucket would be, uh, kind of special opportunities, whether that's sports or entertainment. Uh, sometimes that kind of merges into some of the work we've been doing, uh, with, uh, hotel developments and, uh, and, and other types of specialty, uh, commercial. And I just wanted to just spend a second, just to kind of, uh, give you a glimpse into, uh, what these decision-makers are, are looking at. And it really depends on, uh, the angle that they're taking, you know, does, does a real estate solution, is that what's driving the decision? Uh, is it initially data and demographics, is it the availability of skilled labor, is it the cost of that labor? Uh, there's other things, though, is it related to access, whether that's highway access or access to infrastructure? You all spent a lot of time this morning talking about infrastructure-type projects. Um, some people would mistakenly think that, oh, well, it's all about state and local incentives, uh, uh, but, but frankly, uh, it, it's not, uh, those are not really the main drivers of, of decision factors. Um, oftentimes, in the, uh, in the industrial space, it's proximity to suppliers, it's proximity to markets, and thus it's proximity to highway access. But if you're looking more on the, uh, commercial, uh, and retail side of things, um, uh, what, what we've been focused on is, is these primary job creators in the first bucket. Those are the industrial office, because as we're seeing in this pandemic, without these main drivers of, uh, spending in the retail commercial sector, uh, you can have all the greatest retail and commercial in all, uh, parts of the city, but without, uh, those primary job creators who then have money to spend in the local economy, that's that, that's that ripple effect through the economy that's, that's so important. Um, typically, um, the, the factors on the retail commercial side are, are things like travel patterns and kind of natural boundary areas, where's the current retail tenant mix? Um, what's the competition look like, uh, not only, uh, within the jurisdiction, but outside of it and, and into the region, travel times start getting into play, and then, you know, existing sites and buildings, so um, really it kind of runs the, the gamut as to, you know, which factor or factors are driving the train, the decision-making train, and, and oftentimes, it, it just really depends on what type of industry it is, and really what the ultimate goal is. Um, the last thing I'll mention, you know, on the, on the, on the skilled labor side, um, a lot of these, uh, searches are being done, um, especially in this era that we're living in at the moment. They're being done on the desktop. Uh, they're, they're maybe looking for an available building or available site, or they may be looking at, hey, before we even get into the real estate solution, let's figure out kind of what, what does the, uh, what does the labor look like, what are the data and demographics? And sometimes those two are, are reversed, but it, uh, it really all depends on, uh, on what, uh, what really is driving, uh, the train. So, uh, I, I hope that kind of gives you a little bit of insight as it relates to some of the factors uh, that site selection consultants, real estate professionals, companies themselves, uh, or their real estate departments are, are looking at when they're, when they're trying to make decisions. The bottom line is, they want to make, they're in business to make money. And so, the, all these factors kind of line up in their business model as it relates to, uh, their bottom line.
Uh, Mr. Celito, I want to thank you for joining us, and sorry, we kind of forgot about you, that you were hanging out there, but uh, just wanted to share, um, from a development authority, um, uh, perspective, uh, what, um, investors are looking for, and we, you know, I, I think some people think they still want boots on the ground, but they can, uh, pull up, um, zip codes, area codes, and, and they can tell, you know, what your shopping, spending habits are like, and, and, uh, and so they know if that's gonna be a, a good area for what they're trying to do, right? Location matters.
Certainly.
So, uh, but Mayor, Council, any questions of Brian Celito? Okay, well, thanks.
Brian. Brian?
Yes, Mimi.
Could you speak a little bit in the role that you, you, as the, um, chamber or the authority would have in, in helping, um, businesses locate or occupy, um, property in order to get their development going? Isn't there a process on that? Because a developer can be interested in an area, but they might have to inquire on some of the, the property to buy it. What's the process that goes through that with you?
Well, I, I think it all depends on, uh, you know, what the use is, you know, um, is, is it, is it office industrial, is it, is it, uh, commercial retail? And so we, not only, we, we field all sorts of different calls and, uh, and inquiries as it relates to that, and then we are able to uh, kind of, you know, vet those projects and try to assist in different ways we can, and it all depends, you know, some of them are more sophisticated than others, and, and they kind of know, uh, the lanes to travel in. Others are, are less sophisticated and needs a little more handholding and, and assistance in identifying, uh, opportunities. On our website, choosecolumbusga.com, we have a, a community assessment tool that, uh, has a host of, uh, data, uh, that's supported by, uh, an entity called Esri. Uh, and, and for so, for some people that don't have access to those data and dena- demographics that are often needed in putting together a business plan so that they can get, uh, uh, financing, uh, that, that has been one, uh, great area of, uh, of help for those types of projects. But, you know, on, on other projects, you know, we're, we're seeing and that we're working with, uh, it, it really, it really runs the gamut as to what type of level and what type of expertise, uh, they need uh, in putting together these deals that ultimately turn into projects that are, are announced throughout, throughout our community.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that information.
Well, and Council Woodson, to your question too, let me just say that, you know, when I get contacted by a potential investor, uh, I am going to, because Deputy City Manager Hodge represents me on the Development Authority, um, uh, when I get called by a potential investor, I get Deputy City Manager Hodge to contact, uh, Brian Celito at the Chamber and Peter Bowden at the CBB to put together the team, no matter how small or how large that potential investor, uh, looking at Columbus, uh, would be. Uh, because they have the resources, they have the skills, they do this every day. Uh, they get point two five meals from the city of Columbus to do this, and I need them to be involved as a team, CBB, Development Authority, and Pam Hodge. Of course, Mayor's always involved, but, but when an investor calls my office, I'm turning it over to them because that's their expertise, that's what they do. And so I rely on Brian and, uh, his team, and he's got the best and brightest man on the Development Authority to get it done. And so I just want you to know that when they contact me, I turn it over to those whose responsibility and the expectation from the city is that, go do your thing. And so that's what I do. You're on mute, Council Woodson. Council Woodson, you've muted.
Yes, one moment, I'm a little slow at this. Um, if they would come to Brian instead of you, or if we went with, um, recommend somebody, will Brian do the same process, or what's Brian's process?
Well, Brian, I'll let you answer that.
Well, well, certainly, uh, as, as a, as a team, it's, it's both ways, and it, uh, all depends on, uh, what the request is, and, uh, if it's something that I need to involve, uh, Pam or, or Isaiah in, uh, we're certainly going to do that, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just how that, that team structure works, and, and, uh, you know, I have colleagues and peers across the state, and, uh, uh, frankly, I wouldn't want to do this job in any other jurisdiction other than Columbus, and, uh, because of the fact that, uh, we have, uh, we have a great team and a great system in place, uh, that allows for projects to not get mired in a lot of, uh, nonsense, frankly, that happens in other places, so, uh, if that answers your question, uh, it's a two-way street, and it, it's a, it's a team.
Okay, just wanted to know, very interesting, thank you.
Sure.
So, Mr. Celito, thank you for, uh,
Brian, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager, I have a question for Brian.
Sure.
Look, uh, we had a lot of conversation on development today and potential development, and I think, Mr. City Manager, you talked about TADS, you brought up all these areas that are available to develop in Columbus. Um, I want specifically to just talk a minute about the Liberty District. Uh, you've got the area that probably got the most development incentives of anywhere else in this town. Uh, it would be attractive by far if you base it on that. Brian, when I, when I'm interested in, what are you seeing, what kind of interest are you seeing in the Liberty District? And if you are, I mean, if you would talk and expand on that from that standpoint, the, the opportunities, the, uh, the, uh, 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 I guess, um, possibilities that are there, and then on the flip side, if you're not seeing that kind of interest, what do you think it is that's keeping people from, uh, not being interested in developing in the Liberty District?
Uh, sure, Council Davis, um, I think, um, you know, first of all, uh, my, my, uh, impressions of the Liberty District is, it is a, it is a challenging area to develop in because of its, uh, of its, uh, mix of industrial, uh, with residential, but with also some commercial, so, so it's kind of a, kind of one of those hybrid areas, uh, and, um, it's, it's, uh, it's, I think, a challenge, uh, for, ob- obviously, you know, uh, it's, it's, uh, hasn't had the level of commercial retail investment, you've seen some, but, uh, you know, to try to bring major residential to that area is, is a challenge, because you've got, uh, you know, you've got industrial, uh, then you've got, uh, you know, you've got the jail. That, that whole area is, is, is gonna be kind of hard to do that. Now, we did put out a Liberty District RFP, um, and that, and it was sometime last year, we got very limited response to that. Uh, there was a, uh, proposal to do some kind of mixed use in that area, and, and that could be a good fit. Uh, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to take, uh, somebody who's going to, uh, really, uh, you know, have the development, uh, experience and the acumen and the wherewithal, uh, financially, to make those types of, of, of projects a reality. I have not, frankly, come across any developers, uh, and we put that RFP out to a lot of people, uh, uh, that, uh, that, uh, we did, we did, we got very limited response in that. Um, you know, in my, in my opinion, you know, what could work there? I do think some sort of mixed-use, uh, commercial residential could be, uh, a good fit for that area, but again, it's going to have to be something that's going to be a good blend with the existing, uh, companies and, and others that are already in that area. Um, it's, it's not a, it's not a clean slate, it's, it's, it's typical infield, uh, development, uh, uh, that is, is oftentimes, uh, more challenging to pull off.
Brian, let me just ask you, would you agree that if, if, if that's the case from that type of development that we're talking about, mixed use and retail and residential and all, wouldn't you agree that if you took, uh, consider amount of capital in the hundreds of millions and put in that area and developed a solid anchor in that area, don't you think it would have repercussions and, uh, igniting an area to, to develop and incentivize, uh, developers to come in and, uh, and start making decisions in that area based on having a massive amount of capital that, uh, is, uh, injected into an area like that?
Well, I think if you're asking about a, an infusion of, uh, hundreds of millions of dollars on the infrastructure side, certainly that is part of it, but I also think having a, uh, a catalyst, I, I don't know if that was your word or not, but, but a major-
Catalyst is good.
A major project that is actually out of the ground in that area could be a signal and a driver for future development. And I, I think, you know, you've seen that in other, uh, places, uh, you know, Columbus is, 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 is not specific, but you've seen that in other places in Columbus, uh, where you've had drivers that, that have been anchors that have then brought about redevelopment. So, I would agree with your assessment.
Yeah, I think, you know, we got the river, we got Uptown and the river, and the Riverwalk's been a good, uh, good anchor on the west side of our, of that area down there. I actually look at it as a whole, but on the east side, you really have limited anchors to really, uh, drive development or to put more, uh, people, more purchasing power in an area that would certainly, uh, uh, incentivize the opportunity for investors to come in and, uh, put their money there. And I go back to saying, with that mix, I mean, you're really talking about a revitalization catalyst, and having the right, uh, anchor, so to speak, that would, uh, would set that off. You've got so many development incentives, the most of anywhere in Columbus, Georgia, sitting right there, uh, whether it's from the state, whether it's from the federal government, whether it's from a local municipality, so much opportunity there, um, I would have to think that that would be like somebody handing you a gift that would restore that plan, uh, from a revitalization kind of standpoint.
Well, um, it kind of shut off, so I don't know if they're still talking. Are they still talking there?
No, I don't think anybody's speaking now, Counselor.
Okay. It's like it's frozen or something.
Counselor Davis, I think you're in it. Well, I, he's back. You cut out, Counselor Davis.
That's been, that's been, uh, happening quite a bit with this, this virtual stuff, but, um-
Need a break.
Brian, is you here?
Uh, I, I heard you talking about a catalyst, and then it kind of froze up on me.
Well, I think the whole point is, and we, a lot of us have had conversation, and I know I've, I've been a very outspoken proponent of trying to do something, if we do something with the, uh, Government Center, putting one of the components in the Liberty District area. I just think, and I think Counselor Davis was reinforcing to some degree, um, what we had been talking about, and that is that, you know, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to turn a cost into an investment. And, um, it just makes sense, and I think what, what you were saying when, uh, when you were talking about, um, economic development as a whole, uh, just the nature of the beast, so to speak, was, um, was, was reaffirming that, because it, it's not just one piece. It's got to be capital infusion, it's also got to be, uh, a pretty good headcount and a, a number of people that are going to be a, a, a marketable source of, of, of income for people looking at new places to, to develop. So, so I, yeah, I agree with what Counselor Davis was saying. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, and a lot of that property around there, it looks like in that map, we owned it. So, a lot of that, um, if a developer even wanted to come into that area, we have to see how we either sell that property or become a private partner, partnership, because no one's going to be able to develop or even consider much of that area when we own most of the property. Uh, to do a development, Brian, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but to do a, a, a project in the magnitude that you've mentioned for mixed use and bringing an anchor in and so forth and so on, you're going to need a lot of land, not the bits and pieces that surrounds it. Am I correct or incorrect?
Well, I think it depends on the size and scope and scale of the development, but, uh, you're not incorrect, uh, because, you know, and you all have touched upon some of it today when talking about, uh, right-of-way and parking and, and all of those other things that come with, with development. But to, to Counselor Davis's point and reinforced by the Mayor, it's my opinion that without a driver or a catalyst, Government Center as an example, going into the Liberty District or any other area where you want to see substantial investment in a commercial mixed-use retail-type environment, uh, or, or even office, I, I would, I would say, uh, you, you need, you need something that is going to, uh, spur that development, uh, and it, it, the wait-and-see approach, we've been waiting and seeing for a long time, and it, and it's not happening. So, so I would just humbly suggest to you that if that is in the realm of something to consider, uh, that it continues to be, uh, something that you all discuss and, and think that maybe that is an option that would make, uh, sense, that would drive future development in that specific area.
Well, I'm interested in, and I'm glad to hear this, because I know that the developer that was interesting had a lot of roadblocks in it, um, in that development, and so, it's interesting to hear what you have to say today, and I hope that, um, they'll come back and try, or another developer, because I, I find it curious, um, we have so much development going around the Liberty District, and I'm surprised that some of the investors in our own community haven't even thought of, of, um, the Liberty District, and, uh, what beneficial it will be to their development or even to the community as it's in a historical district. So, I'm interested to continue this conversation at another time, and Glenn, um, you're so smart on this stuff. I would love me, you, and Brian to have a conversation about this, because I'm like Isaiah, I hope before I leave this earth, something gets done there. And it's very, um, crazy with everything that's been going on. So, thank you, it was very informative, I appreciate it.
Well, and I'll say, and, and this will be the last point, because I know we need to move on unless there are questions from Council, but, and we talked about the nature and all of that, uh, but the, the thing that's puzzling to me, in a sense, is how can Liberty District be a rock throw from Uptown with all that you heard today in the TADs in Uptown? How can the Liberty District be a rock throw, walking distance? You can't play music outside at the River Center or on Broadway and not hear it in the Liberty District. How can you have such development, a rock throw, walking distance from the Liberty District, but you can't get anyone into the Liberty District? There's a reason for that, and we need to figure out what that reason is, and we need to get beyond the reason.
I appreciate you.
It doesn't make sense. So, with that, Mr. Mayor.
See, I think we probably-
If you go, if, if you go back to what Mr. Salido said in the beginning, or what developers, companies, uh, groups are looking for, foot traffic, car traffic, infrastructure on the ground, they want something that's solid that, that's going to support their investments. You got to have that kind of thing, and then once you have that anchor in the right place, it's just going to spark like stuff that just start growing, just like happened in Uptown, and that's how you got to make it happen. But you got to get that component in there of what developers are looking for. I, you know, to me, that's what's missing, because like I said earlier, you've got, you've got the most development incentives anywhere in this town, sitting right in the Liberty District, tons of them, opportunities there. So, you got to have something else to add to the equation, it's like a piece of puzzle, it's, you have to put it in the middle, and you fit it there, and then it'll start growing from there, and everything comes together. And then it just starts blending in with the rest of the components you have towards the river, and then you, that's how you grow an area. If you take something and just put it back in the same place, you really don't get anything out of it, but, um, I, I think, I, I, I thank you, uh, Mr. Salido, for, uh, for entertaining my questions and answering them, I thought that was some good, uh, some good points you made.
And I just wanted to add to that, that's exactly what happened in Uptown. Let's keep in mind, Uptown was completely dead, maybe two, three stores were there, um, an anchor went in. Um, before the anchor came in, uh, people got together and started creating, um, the Uptown, and the city went in there developing, and then CSU came in-
City Council, Pop Barnes.
And that's how it got to where it is. So, I think we're in the right directions. Like Isaiah said, we just got to find out what that problem is.
Uh, Mr. Salido, thank you, sir, for-
Now, go ahead, I'm just going to remind everybody, we got a budget meeting going on after this, if it's still daylight.
Thank you, sir, for, for your time today, and we appreciate all that you do, the Development Authority, the Chamber, for our community, our region. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I appreciate you.
All right. Take care.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right. Any questions or anything else for the City Managers? All right, we'll move on to the Clerk, uh, Council. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, we have a resolution to change the time for the regular council meeting of June ninth to 5:30 PM, for the Council to hold a special call meeting on June sixteenth at nine o'clock AM, and changing the time of the regular council meeting of June twenty-third to nine o'clock AM. The June second proclamation session and the June thirtieth work session would be canceled. Just need a motion?
Second, Madam Counselor Huff.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Why are we doing this?
This was suggested by the Finance Director to accommodate the budget review sessions, and the fact that we will be having first reading on taxpayers' bill of rights, as well as the budget ordinances.
Um, do we anticipate being back in the, um, council chambers by the first of June?
I don't know if anticipates the right word, uh, we're very hopeful. We, we're, we're monitoring it, and if we get, uh, we'll see how it goes at the Civic Center, and, uh, and kind of be wa- and we are, truthfully, we're watching the trends and the numbers, and if they continue flat and continue to go down, then I think there's a good chance we may be back in by June.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion and a second to approve.
Thank you. Motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any Counselor opposed? Okay, it's approved.
Next, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
All members will be received.
Second.
I'll say it.
Motion and second to receive the minutes. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they are, they are approved.
Item three are board appointments. We have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, we have Ms. Talua Palua was nominated to serve another term of office, she may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to, uh, confirm Ms. Palua. Uh, any, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? She's confirmed.
And if the Council does not have any objections, I will take the Columbus Aquatics Commission nominations together. We have Mr. David Helmig, Mr. Bruce Samuels, Mr. John P. Steed, Ms. Bother Cummings, were all nominated to serve another term of office. Dr. Janet-
Second.
Motion and second to confirm, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? They're confirmed.
Item F, Dr. Janet C. Bussey was nominated to fill a vacant seat, she's ready to be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Second.
Motion second to confirm, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody object? She's approved.
For the Golf Course Authority, we have the seat of Mr. James B. Houston Jr. He was nominated to serve another term of office, he may be confirmed.
Second.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Houston, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? He's confirmed.
For the next Columbus Golf Course Authority, Councilors Huff and Garrett are nominating Ms., Mr. Richard L. Wright to serve another term of office.
Move approval.
Um, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Woodson, we would have to bring this back for vote tabulation, because Counselor Crabbe had nominated Mr. Tommy Nobles. So, we will bring that back at the next meeting for, uh, vote tabulation.
All right. Thank you, I apologize.
Uh, for Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, I have the seats of Ms. Sharon Baker and Mr. Kenneth Lur, uh, both may be confirmed.
Move confirmation. Second.
Motion second to confirm, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? They're confirmed.
For the Regional, State Regional Advisory Council for Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, Ms. Annie Davis and Ms. Cynthia Smith were both nominated to serve another term of office. They may be confirmed.
Second.
Motion second to confirm, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
They're, they're confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have the seat of, uh, Warren Wagner, this is a District Five representative.
Move confirmation.
I'm sorry, we, uh, I'm sorry, we don't have a nominee, this is Counselor Crabbe's nomination.
And he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to serve, he resigned.
Next, we have council appointment, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, we have one vacant seat that's open for nominations. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the at-large members, we have Larry Derby, Ashley Lee, and Courtney Loughlin, um, all three, um, all three seats are open for nominations. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Anybody else have anything that needs to come before either staff or either Council? All right, uh, we have a budget, uh, the Budget Chair has asked me to announce that the Budget Review Committee will begin to meet in, uh, twenty minutes, so we'll say just, uh, a little bit after one-third.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I, I do see where Ms. Elamine is waiting in the lobby.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see her in the audience.
Four minutes, three minutes.
Yes, so if you would, Jeremy, if you-
Yeah, I, uh, I have a matter for City Manager.
Okay, well, she go ahead.
Uh, referral, but, Mr. City Manager, uh, I've called this in a few times, um, we've got somewhat of a problem at the J.R. Allen Overpass at River Road on the northeast corner, it just seems to be an issue with, uh, number one, you got- It just seems to be an issue with, number one, you got a lot of trees dying, which I question if, you know, there may be a reason for that happening right there, but there's a tremendous amount of garbage and waste sitting up on the corner at the overpass that just something needs to be done about that. Can you have somebody go out there and look into that and make sure it's all cleaned up?
Certainly, yes.
On the northeast corner of JR Allen Overpass that goes over River Road.
Got it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions of the City Manager or anybody else? All right, Jeremy, if you would allow Ms. Elamine back in.
Hello.
Ms. Elamine?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you but cannot see you, I hope you're, I apologize, there you are.
Well, you're looking great, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Mayor, I can do this in less than two minutes.
Okay.
In the interest of time, I will call Alexis to get that meeting with you, we can do a phone meeting or Zoom meeting, and I will call the Clerk of Council to get the contact information for Councilors in District Two, Five, Six, Eight, and Nine, because I want to have a one-on-one conversation with them, and I want to ask the Clerk of Council to be sure to give Mr. Scott the document that preceded my appearance before Council, which is about the SNARL campaign. The SNARL campaign is to save now and repair the Liberty Theater. What just happened was a complete obliteration of the jewel in the Liberty District, which is the Liberty Theater. The emergency that we're dealing with is that the roof is caving in. Nothing was said about that, Mr. City Manager, and the reason why there are problems in getting the Liberty District done, because it is the black historic district, and the legacy of slavery and lynchings and all the stuff that Columbus is known for shows itself in the structural racism in this community, which is why I say reparations with no strings attached to repair the Liberty Theater, and I'll be in touch with the other council members who make up the white majority.
Thank you, Ms. Elamine.
Are we clear? Are we clear?
Yes, ma'am, I look forward to hearing from you.
I'll be talking to Alexis about getting up with you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Jeremy, you want to escort Ms. Elamine to the lobby?
Tracee stairs.
Is now exiting.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will reconvene now at 1:35.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? We'll see y'all in about 20 minutes.